Okay, why don't we get started? We've actually got a long list of speakers on non-agenda items. So, we're gonna actually... Okay, we've got a long list of speakers on non-agenda public testimony. We're gonna limit speakers to two minutes apiece. At 5:30, non-agenda testimony ends. And if we've got people who still want to speak to non-agenda items at that point, you can do so at the end of the meeting. So, we're gonna start with Maria Gibson, Sean McCardle, Becky Breedlove, and Nancy Laidlaw. Okay, sure thing. Thanks. Maria Gibson, Sean McCardle, Nancy Laidlaw. Or any of you here? Okay, please come on and speak.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to speak on behalf of the San Diego School of International Studies. My name is Nancy Slade Law, and I have a daughter who's a junior in the IB program. I just wanted to make the point that we moved all the way across the world to come to this school. And we feel very strongly that there are other international families like us that would come from great distance and make great effort to come to this school because it is so unique. Having lived in Barcelona for two years facing high school, I can tell you that the one best investment you can make for your children is not to interrupt their high school, not to make them go from different curriculum from state to state or country to country. The IB program really, truly does that. Increasingly, more families are living abroad. It makes San Diego really stand out to have an IB program that's not only established, but 44th in the top 100 of the rankings of the U.S. World News Report. I did a little further looking, and eight schools, or only eight schools in California are ranked above that school, only eight. And of those, none are IB programs. It is really a jewel. I did a lot of homework from afar. We moved all the way from Barcelona to be here. I drive from La Jolla every day to come down, and I'm not disappointed. It's a hugely important program. You're so blessed to have it, and I just hope that you do everything you can to keep it functioning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Maria Gibson, Sean McCardle, Julianne Markow, Bill Nericio, and Hector Monta.
Sean McCardle, Kiwanis Club of San Diego. I see a few new faces up there. I guess we'll get to know you soon. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, in your deliberations wrestling with the budget, I think we need to look ahead and at a bigger picture. Education determines the future of a society, a state, and a nation. Education determines the quality and the strength of that society, state, and nation. And it is people who determine the quality of that education, not infrastructure. Teachers and school counselors provide that education, not infrastructure. To lay the crucial foundation for our children, we need the best teachers, the best counselors, and the best programs at the elementary level. For the sake of our society, our state, our nation, I urge you not to scrimp, cut, or dilute your cadre of professional teachers and counselors. Our children and we depend upon them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Good evening, and thank you for your attention to this critical issue. My name is Julianne Marco, and my son is an 11th grader at the School of International Studies at San Diego High. I am here tonight not only as a parent, but as a concerned member of our community. My family lives here in Hillcrest, and San Diego High is our neighborhood school. Until he entered high school, my son was a student at a local private school. But through the years, my husband and I have kept an eye on the School of International Studies, reading the news stories about its national ranking and the success of its students, and talking to very satisfied parents of graduates of the IS program. After due deliberation and several visits to the school, our son decided to enroll in the IS program and the IB program. He is thriving there, both as a scholar, a varsity athlete, and a community-involved student. And our family has become very involved in the life of the school and its community. He has already been contacted by some of the most competitive colleges in the nation, and we are certain that the School of International Studies is preparing him for success in college and life beyond. I am regularly consulted by other parents from private schools in the area about the School of International Studies, and we enthusiastically encourage them to visit the school, talk to students and faculty, and enroll their children. They can get an excellent, excellent education there. Therefore, I want to urge you, the members of the School Board of Education, to preserve and even expand the School of International Studies and not jeopardize this excellent program, which is a stellar example of what can be accomplished by our public education system. Thank you for your time, and thank you all for your commitment to excellent public education in California.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Bill Nericio. I'm a professor at San Diego State University. I direct the master's program there in arts and letters. And my son Lorenzo is a student at the School of International Studies, and he's thriving there. Three years ago, I was sitting on the College of Arts and Letters Council of Chairs, and I was facing a 40% cut in my budget when I was chair of the Department of English. And I'm just here to urge you tonight, as you move forward with your hard decisions, not to break anything that isn't broken, not to fix anything that is thriving. There's a lot of things in the educational system that you have to address, and there has to be a fair amount of experimentation and exploration, even in these times of crisis. I'd urge you, as you make these difficult decisions, to look to your schools and see what is working. The School of International Studies is thriving. My son is thriving. I'm the product of Catholic schools. I was a Catholic school boy from Laredo, Texas. I like to tell people I was raised by nuns, but I've never seen a school like the School of International Studies. It's extraordinary, it's public, it's rich, and it's beautiful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hector Monta, Katie Crozer, Amanda Sokowiac, Seb Kowiac, Glenn Williams, and Tom Garen.
Hi, my name's Hector Monta. First of all, thank you, the entire school board, for this opportunity to speak on behalf of International Studies. My wife and I have two children that have gone through the entire magnet program, K-8 all the way through the enrichment program at International Studies. It's been an amazing experience. They've matriculated all the way through. My daughter, who is studying her first year at Yale University, achieved not only just an enriched fulfillment in her experience at International Studies, but she's also took this higher learning in her love for language skills and acquisition, and is continuing on to study her fourth language. My son is a sophomore at International Studies, but it might come as a surprise to many that I've spoken to in the past that it wasn't an easy decision to send him here. It was a decision that was mutual between him and my wife. We wanted to make sure that he had every available resource to him. And as every individual is unique, as every student is unique, they learn uniquely and differently. So, we just wanted to make sure he had the best opportunity there. At the end, we all realize that we made not just the best decision, but the right decision. But more importantly, it was also mostly his decision. If I had more time, I would, you know, take the next two hours, but I only have two minutes to talk about how awesome the instructors at International Studies are, the program, what they bring. It's just amazing that, you know, there's absolutely no mystery in my mind that they have achieved at a top level in meeting all the A through G requirements. But I know all you guys know that. The expectations of the instructors are incredible. They allow the students to achieve at higher levels even beyond their own expectation. So, I know... I'll just finish it with that. I know that the new state government coming in, there's lots of challenges that they're bringing forth towards you guys, but I just ask to implore you guys to collaborate and come up with new dreams to make sure that this program sees the flow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Katie Crozer, and I'm a junior in her first year peer mediator at Patrick Henry High School. The peer mediation program at Henry is already such a huge part of my life, even in the short amount of time I've been a peer mediator. The experiences that I've been having and the things I've been learning are already helping to shape me into a completely different person than when I started in September. At the beginning of the school year, my head wasn't into my schoolwork as much as it should have been, but being a peer mediator has already changed me, and now I have something to be proud of in school. In the past, I've had problems with school and with other students, but Mrs. Efting and Mrs. Regus saw past my issues and chose to make me a peer mediator. They believed and still believe in me, and that motivated me to better myself as a person. Because of that, I have something that I can look forward to succeeding in. It's given me something to work for, and that's not only helping myself, but helping others as well. In peer mediation, it's not just learning about conflict resolution or the dangers of smoking. It's about learning how to communicate with others and help others learn as well. We give presentations about sexual harassment, preventing teen relationship violence, conflict resolution, and HIV/AIDS to all ninth graders, which is currently 750 students. We learn to listen better and therefore become more acute listeners in everyday life experiences, not just school. We've become more aware of our surroundings and of others' feelings. We have a better regard for the way we treat people, and we have a greater understanding of what it means to be responsible. We learn to listen to people with respect and become active listeners. Being an active listener isn't just simply listening. It means that you truly grasp what the person is saying, and you provide meaningful input, and you try to understand how the person is feeling. And the skills to be a good listener aren't things that are easily acquired. From day one and to this day, all of us peer mediators are still learning how to be acute listeners and still learning how to help people. And I can personally say that I've grown so much as a peer mediator. We all have. We all support and believe in each other, and the bonds that we make with not only each other, but Mrs. Regus and Mrs. Efting as well are ones that we have, are ones that have and will continue to affect us immensely as we go on to bigger things. This is such a huge part of all of our lives, and I'm proud to be a Patrick Henry peer mediator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amanda Sokowiac, and I'm a senior at Patrick Henry and a second-year peer mediator. You just heard a story about just how powerful peer mediation is and how it has the power to change people. It's made me better able to communicate and voice my opinion, and standing here is proof of that. This wonderful program would be nothing without the advisors, our nurse and counselor, Miss Efting and Miss Regus. They have given me the tools I need to flourish in the program, and those tools I will be using many years after I'm a mediator. Without these advisors on campus, there wouldn't be our class, and there would be less educated people, more fights, and more people who are struggling. The whole school benefits from the program, and it's all because of Miss Efting and Miss Regus. The awareness of peer mediation and all the work we do on and around campus is very broad. We have students coming in and requesting mediations when they see themselves in conflict. They don't have to be requested by a student. They get requested by teachers, security, and administrators. Peer mediation has an impact not only on the students, but it also has an impact on the mediators themselves. You become so passionate about what you do that many of our peer mediators have even become peer educators at their college. Mediations are confidential ways of solving conflict, and this year alone, we've done 32 mediations, starting in the second week of school. But if students are having a problem, we also have peer buddies where you talk with them one-on-one about anything ranging from high school or family or friends. So far this year, we've seen 115 peer buddies. When you think of a nurse or a counselor, you think of a broad topic, helping people. The ones at my school go above and beyond. Their involvement with peer mediation doesn't stop after one period, it goes all day. We even have an after-school program called Prevent. Without nurses or counselors, our school will not be the same, and future students will have not had the opportunity and privilege that I am so fortunate to have had. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Williams. I'm the counselor and dean of students at Lincoln High School. I want to talk to you about the major responsibilities of a high school counselor, especially in some of our urban cities. I'll start off with some personal and crisis-type of counseling, then I'll get into some academic mechanics, so everybody here can understand the difficulty of the job that we have to do. I've had students that have had parents that have been deported, and as a counseling team, we have found resources to pay for their rent while they relocate with another relative that can assume the financial responsibilities. This happens more than people think in our urban school districts so close to Mexico. A lot of issues come about if you teach or counsel down this way. I have also had students that have been subjected to domestic violence in their home and had to leave the home, and counseling team has found youth shelters and provided bus transportation so the student can continue his or her education. In our city schools, a lot of times, there are a lot of substance abuse problems in our schools, and students are impaired and can't learn. And we at Lincoln, we provide substance abuse counseling on campus. A lot of parents come to us and ask us for help, and we refer them to community agencies that sometimes are often free services or on a sliding scale because they look for us for guidance, because oftentimes they tell us they don't know what to do when their child is abusing substances. We also have a gang prevention counseling at our school for students that are involved in gangs or curious about gangs and not focusing on their education. I'll wrap it up real quick. Then as to academic role, we have need 44 credits to graduate. We assist students that are deficient in credits, providing Apex Online School. We have extended day school, night school in our district. We provide students with help in passing the California exit exam, and also help students filling out applications for college, financial aid...
Thanks, Glenn.
...and articulation for underclassmen when they come to our school.
Thanks, thanks very much, Glenn. Thanks very much. Tom Garen, Fadumo Said, John Nguyen, Pat Washington, Ido Gele, and Mohamed Said.
My name's Tom Garen. I'm a taxpayer and a voter. And coincidentally, I ran into a book here, Mark Twain's The Adventures of Huck and Barry Finn. Cloth-covered, remember those? Anybody? Remember when they're cloth-covered? And it came from Campbell Union High School District, Delmar High School. And then the inside cover has all the students that read it and all the teachers that assigned it. This book has the N-word. Back there, it didn't have the N-word. It had the real word. Has the N-word 226 times. Classic, right? Anybody who read it in here? Let's see the house where it... Yeah, that's not bad. Make me proud, make me proud. So, anyway, so next day, coincidentally on Tuesday, I see a Union Tribune, right? And they got this little cartoon, and it's Huck Finn and N-word Jim going down to Mississippi. And Huck tells N-word Jim, "What do you reckon is the most offensive word in the world?" And N-word Jim says, "Censorship, Huck." And Huck says, "Those damn scoundrels." That's where American education is at. It's all about reading. I get the Time Magazine every week, right? Where are the jobs? American education has a three-track system. You go to prison, you go to war, or you go to college. First two, prison and war, takes 75% of the jobs. So, if you want a job in the future, prison or war. How are we doing on the goal on prison? I guess I gotta continue next... Was this a two-minute thing?
This was. Thank you, Mr. ...
Last time, I spent four hours in here, and Catherine threw me out after one minute.
All right. Well, you got two this time, so we're getting better.
Do you want to hear the ending of this next week, please?
Faduma Said.
Good evening. I'm Faduma Said, and I'm a junior at Crawford High School. I'm also an ASB representative, and as a representative, I know what my peers at Crawford want. At the November cluster meeting held at Carver Elementary, well over 100 students marched from Crawford to Carver Elementary to express their support for small schools. And at the December meeting, the December cluster meeting, students expressed their views. Ms. Sheila Jackson attended our cluster meeting at Crawford, and she knows what's best for Crawford, and she knows we want small schools. But my reason for coming here tonight is to let the rest of you know. The small schools at Crawford take our education higher than it is, makes us succeed faster. It's the reason why we hunger for more knowledge every day. Our parents raised us from birth to stand up and speak on what we believe in. It's very clear that Crawford High School is not the only high school with small schools, but yet it's the only high school being picked on. It's not one of the wealthiest high schools in San Diego, but money's being taken away from it. It's not a small school if it's given one principal. But when I ask, "Why do this to Crawford?", I'm not gonna hear anything that has to do with Crawford. I'm only gonna hear something about Lincoln. Lincoln may have a college campus, but it's not how we look like that matters to us is what we have. And do you know what a Crawford student has that an affluent student doesn't have? The will to stand in front of the Board of Education and fight for their school. We can't change Crawford's past, but Crawford today shouldn't be based on its past. We can't change that. People may act in a certain way when they hear Crawford. But what we as the students can do is play on that one string we have, and our small schools, just the way it is right now, is our string. Small schools at Crawford taught the students, "No goal will ever be too high, no education will ever be too deep, no challenge will ever be too hard or extreme, and no choice will be made about us without us." What small schools taught me personally will forever be with me. Thank you.
My name's Jonathan Nguyen, and my address is on file. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Superintendent Koba. I'm a teacher at the Crawford Educational Complex, and I'm here tonight to share publicly a couple of comments. My first comment concerns your recent decision to adjust the way Title I funds are distributed in this school district. I applaud you for realizing the importance of getting more dollars to the schools with the greatest needs. Thank you for standing up and supporting schools and communities like Crawford. My other comment concerns the school site allocations approved by the board at last Thursday night's special board meeting, otherwise known as Option 1. As I scanned the principal allocations for all district elementary and middle schools, I saw sort of the same thing. Small or large, every elementary and middle school has been allocated one principal. But when I looked at the high schools, I saw a significantly different picture. Medium and large-size high schools were all given one principal, yet the small schools were all given less than one principal, indicating that they must share. I'm curious to know why small elementary and small middle schools get to have their own principal, yet small high schools must share. San Diego and Kearney small high schools were all allocated half a principal each, while Crawford's small schools have been given only one quarter principal each. I'm a teacher at the Crawford Small School known as CHAMPs. Our listed enrollment is 359 students, and we have been allotted one quarter of a principal. There are 32 district schools with enrollments smaller than ours who have all been allotted an entire principal. This allocation makes it feel as though Crawford schools are valued less, less than all others in the district. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Mohamed Said, a senior at Crawford School of Community Health and Medical Practices, one of the 36 seniors out of 60 that had already been accepted to a Cal State University. Crawford, before I enrolled, was presented to me as a school with a bad reputation by members of the community, whose eyes were shut when shown a glimpse of amazing contributions that Crawford has made to the community, and by the members who chose to cover their ears when told that Crawford has and still is performing better academically than most other schools combined. After spending four years at Crawford, one club has not only caught my eyes, but the eyes of the entire City Heights community, as well as the First Lady of the United States, Michelle Obama. The Crawford Garden, a model to many of the schools in the community, is like a melting pot due to the many hands that contribute to it each and every year. And as an intern to the garden, I have learned about over a dozen cultures and their food, their lifestyle and customs. I have learned about hydroponics, composting, harvesting, cooking, things I would have never learned in a traditional classroom setting. The Crawford Garden produces fruits and vegetables for the school's cafeteria and participates in the farmer's market weekly to promote good health when it comes to eating right and making sure there's a healthier choice other than fast food. For many new immigrants, the garden is a significant part of their lives because they have found that garden as a safe haven from the struggles of their old home. And that just goes to show you have an impact Crawford High School has to a community when it comes to giving back. When I hear Crawford High School, I hear the laughter of the students from different countries working to change the backyard into something vital to the community. And when I take a look at the campus, I picture the 20 or so students taking initiative against the negative aspects of their neighborhood by building an environment where the community can benefit from. What better way of giving back to the community than a garden? Instead of providing a fruit or vegetable to feed the community for a day, Crawford has stepped up and provided a garden from which the members of the community can harvest from for years to come. And I am proud that I have signed the enrollment papers four years ago because I, in turn, was provided valuable life skills, and thank Crawford High School for that. Thank you, board members, and happy birthday, Ms. Breedlove, one of the best calculus teachers there is.
All right.
Hi, my name is Ido Gele. I'm a Crawford Cluster alumni and San Diego State graduate, and also one of the three co-founders of Youth Empowerment Focus. I'm here to introduce our organization, which is a community-based organization that will be working on Crawford campus with students and their families to empower them, to advocate for their rights, and become informed on decisions being made that affect their lives. Our community is labeled as non-responsive and neglective when it comes to issues of public policy. Keep in mind that there are many reasons for these false labels. The demographics of the community of Crawford students live in a majority of low-income and immigrant households, but that doesn't mean our vote shouldn't count. We are voting, we are the voting majority in this community, and we want to support the youth and their families as community express their civic consciousness and be welcome to take part of the public political process. Youth Empowerment Focus and other charitable organizations and SDSU have been collaborating to help City Heights community with voicing their opinions. UEF was founded by Crawford Cluster alumni, and their main purpose is to mobilize the next-generation leaders that will continue to make positive changes in our community. Many of these youth leaders can be found on Crawford campus and are here today to let the board know that small high schools are needed and benefit them a great deal. Youth Empowerment Focus will support the youth in achieving goals that benefit them in our community. Thank you.
Go for it.
Good evening. My name is Pat Washington. My address is on file. Superintendent Koba, board members Richard Barrero, president. I wanted to say a couple of things. One is thank you very much for giving the neediest schools more resources in your allocation of Title I dollars. And then I also want to say that one of the most exciting things that's happened recently is that I participated in a cluster meeting, in the Lincoln Cluster meeting last night, and they had a presentation about Nye Elementary that was done by two third-grade students at Nye Elementary. Those two students did a PowerPoint presentation and a YouTube video about their school where they situated their school in the world. So, they took Nye Elementary, they showed the audience where now Nye is in the community, and they took it all the way out to the world. And then they talked about all the things they're learning at that school to help them be better citizens, to make them be technologically savvy, and to make them to really care about education as a whole. That's what you're doing with the Title I's funds. You're helping the schools that need it most. You're helping the schools that need it most and I truly want to thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, I'm gonna ask the indulgence of my fellow board members to extend non-agenda testimony another 10 minutes. And then I'm gonna ask each speaker to limit your comments to one minute because I know we've got people who want to speak and otherwise you'll have to wait until the end of the meeting tonight. So if we can quickly move forward with Anayeli Garcia, Dylan Malloy, Olivia Sanchez, Natalie Mason, and Philippe Ponse. Please go ahead.
Buenas tardes a todos ustedes. Mi nombre es Anayeli Garcia y soy una estudiante de la preparatoria San Diego Escuela de Estudios Internacionales. La misión de nuestra escuela es involucrar, iluminar y capacitar a todo estudiante para vivir con éxito en la comunidad global. Puedo asegurar que he visto el cumplimiento de esta misión en mi vida.
Good afternoon, I'll be interviewing for this lady. Hi, my name is Anayeli Garcia. I am a student at San Diego High School of International Studies. Oh, she's, um, excuse me. Go right ahead.
Lo que más disfruto de la Escuela de Estudios Internacionales es la diversidad que hay en sus estudiantes. Antes que me escribiera en la escuela, me encontraba rodeada de hispanos, lo cual me aislaba del mundo exterior. Desde que comencé la preparatoria, he hecho amigos de diferentes nacionalidades. Estas amistades me han abierto el entendimiento para comprender el mundo aún más. Yo vine de la escuela Memorial, recuerdo que al terminar mis estudios ahí me gradué primera de mi clase. Cuando empecé la preparatoria, me encontré con un gran desafío. No había sido preparada para el currículo exigente del BI. Con ayuda puedo adaptarme al currículo intenso del BI. Hasta ahora puedo decir que he sido exitosa. Como estudiante he visto un crecimiento a mí misma. Estoy, está rodeada de estudiantes dedicados y me he motivado para mejorar en la escuela. Mis propios padres han sido testigos de este cambio, no tan solo como estudiante, pero también como una joven a punto de ingresar al mundo adulto. Mi éxito ha sido tan grande que la semana próxima tendré una entrevista para la Universidad de Princeton. My name is Anayeli Garcia. I'm a student at San Diego High School of International Studies. Our school mission and statement is to engage, enlighten, and empower all students to live successfully in a global community. I can assure you that I have seen this dream come true in my life. One thing I love about International Studies is the diversity of its students. Before I was surrounded by Hispanics and was isolated in that small community. Ever since I enrolled at International Studies, I have made friends from different cultural backgrounds. Through my friendships with MAGNIC students, I have gained a broader knowledge of the role. I come from Memorial Academy Middle School. I recall that when I promoted from eighth grade, I was at the top of my class. When I first entered the high school, I faced a major challenge. I hadn't been prepared for IB's demanding curriculum, but some help I soon learned to adapt to their curriculum. So far, I have been very successful. As a student, I have experienced growth in academics. My success has been so great that next week I will be interviewing for Princeton University.
All right. Thank you. Okay, and again, we've got one minute per speaker now.
Okay. Good evening, students, parents, and the board of education. My name is Olivia Sanchez and I'm a sophomore at San Diego High School, School of International Studies. I've been fortunate enough to be allowed to attend such a proclaimed and rigorous program. From kindergarten to the eighth grade, I attended Longfellow Spanish Immersion, where I began speaking Spanish at the age of five. Then I continued on to San Diego High, where I can honestly say it has proved to be the best high school experience imaginable. San Diego High has provided a much-needed continuation program for several of the language immersion-based primary schools, such as Longfellow Language Academy and Albert Einstein. Along with the numerous languages spoken at International Studies, the school attracts students from all ethnic groups and socioeconomic levels, giving us an opportunity to interact with a diverse population. The teachers and principals are extremely dedicated to our success, doing everything in their power to further our knowledge. A perfect example is last weekend, our principal and English teacher.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep going.
Hello and good evening. My name is Natalie Mason and I am a student at San Diego High of International Studies. Although I live in Miramesa, on a good day, it takes me 40 minutes to get to IS and it's completely worth it, not just because of the rigorous academics that'll prepare me for a high school, or excuse me, a college education, but because of the extracurricular activities I'm allowed to engage in at San Diego High School. I'm a member of three clubs on campus, Teen Life Choices, which educates students about the importance and dangers of substance abuse and also offers peer mentoring to incoming freshmen, as well as Science Scholars, a club that mentors and tutors students in the sciences, and has helped me to learn about not only IB biology, but also honors chemistry, classes which are extremely difficult, but completely worth it. Also, I'm a member of International Studies Ambassadors, which is a club that helps create a community at IS that is engaging to not only students, but the parents of the incoming freshmen who are obviously nervous about sending their kids to any high school, not only IS. This program is so important to me because it's changed my life and it's given me a family outside of what I have in Miramesa. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sam.
Hello, my name is Dylan Malloy and I am representing San Diego High International Studies. For one second, I just want everyone here who's representing IS to raise your hand. There's a reason for that. All of the teachers at our school are devoted to their students on a level that goes beyond education. We are friends, we talk to them, we laugh with them, and we have fun. Losing any one of them would be detrimental to the high ranking, the number-one ranking in the San Diego Unified School District of International Studies. People travel from all over San Diego, from Oregon and from Spain to come to our school because of the great impact that these teachers make in making a connection with their students. And I know, coming from a society and from a home life where I was having to transport myself and getting myself to school and not being able to rely on my mom, that without the students and educators and the ability to just have fun and learn at the same time at International Studies, that I would not have been accepted to Stanford University. I know that without International Studies, none of the students at our school would be able to experience high school in the way that they do it in the other institution. Thank you and please let this resonate with you.
Good afternoon, esteemed board members. My name is Philippe Ponse. I'm the drama director as well as IB French teacher at San Diego High and you've guessed it, International Studies. I'm here to bring you a packet of information about our school, but more than anything else, I'm here to share the wonderful excitement we bring to our job every day, the faculty as well as the students. You are looking at the jewel in the crown and for the past four or five years, we've steadily been doing more with less. And I think you need to understand that we are very, very close to what I would call the breaking point. So in the last seconds that I have, if I can prevail upon you to think real hard about maintaining the budget for us, I will have done a good thing for us. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Dorsey. I'm here with the Point Loma Cluster and also Barnard Elementary School. It's a magnet school in Point Loma where my oldest daughter has been attending for the past three years. She's learning Mandarin Chinese. She has succeeded in that language so much to where she speaks with professors from SDSU who are teaching Chinese in Chinese versus speaking to them in English. I'm also here to request that you reconsider the allocation of the Title I funding. Our school is at 60% and we use every cent of the Title I funding that we have for our English language, our English language learners who are getting pulled out of classes every day to be taught in their language and in English to improve their English learning skills. There are 6,000 students in the Point Loma Cluster. Taking the Title I funding away from us, even though we're not above the 70 percentile, will affect at least 3,500 students, which is a vast majority of us. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
John Whitlock and Nathan Eisenberg.
Good evening. My name is John Whitlock and I want to thank you for letting us speak here tonight. I grew up in Mission Hills and I'm alumni of San Diego High. Currently, I have twin daughters that attend the IS program at San Diego High and they are pursuing the diploma also. Several years ago, my wife and I made the decision to live in the city as opposed to the suburbs and sent our children to San Diego High. Many advised us against this, however, we wanted our children to have a good high school experience that was rich in culture and economic diversity. Nevertheless, it was important to us that our children receive an excellent education. We thoroughly investigated the program and decided it was an exceptional opportunity for our twins. We have seen our daughters study intensely late into the evenings and early into the mornings. We are amazed at the level of education they are receiving. We are thrilled with their teachers and have seen many students motivated towards excellence as a result of this program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nathan Eisenberg. I attended San Diego High International Studies up until last year when I graduated. I currently go to Reed College. I remember when I was in kindergarten, my mom wanted me to attend this school and I didn't really know anything about it because it was very abstract. But when I finally attended, I was kind of resistant towards it because as one would be towards high school. But by the end of it, I can safely say that I love San Diego High for multiple reasons. One of them being that the community there that I was a part of was one of the best that I've ever been a part of. And some of my best friends have come from that school, including teachers too. And the other thing is the program was very enlightening. There was a few classes that were very eye-opening, including the Theory of Knowledge class, which funnily enough is actually an IB-required class. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Nate. Okay, that concludes our non-agenda testimony. If folks want to take a minute who were planning to exit before we start the regular board meeting, please do so. Yeah. Yeah. I'd like to call the ADJ ROTC color guard from Point Loma High School to present the colors. Please stand.
Ready, cut. Ready, cut. Forward, march. Left, 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 right, 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 left. Left, right, left, left, right. Upward, face. Team, hop. Present, colors.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, cut. Ready, cut. Order, colors. Ready, cut. Layer, face. Hold, colors. Forward, march. Left, 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 right, 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 left. Left, right, left, left, right. Upward, face. Team, hop. Present, colors.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, cut. Ready, cut. Order, colors. Ready, cut. Layer, face. Hold, colors. Forward, march. Left, 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 right, 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 left. Left, right.
Thank you.
What was your, what was your title?
I was a student when I retired, but I have my own name like that.
All right. Chief Jackson has got a few, got a few tips. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the January 11th, 2011 regular meeting to order with all board members present. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium and you've, if you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 PM and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the ASB student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself and what's going on at your school. We'll start with Nancy Sokis from Patrick Henry.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Sokis. I'm the ASB president at Patrick Henry High School and the ASB District Council President. Currently at Patrick Henry High School, we are preparing for our talent show, which I would like to invite you all to. It's on January 20th and it will be held at Lewis Middle School at 6 o'clock. We are also preparing for the Freedom for Hunger Food Drive, which will start next week as well. We are continuing to work with our WASC leadership team as well as meet with student and staff groups to continue discussing any possible changes and improvements to our school for the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. And a, coming from a fine family, we've got Carlos Bohorquez from Kearney High School.
Hello, I'm Carlos Bohorquez from Kearney High School. At my school, we're now just trying to put a winter formal together. There hasn't been a winter formal in my school since 20 years ago, so we're trying to be the first ones to have a winter formal again. Another concern that we have at Kearney, like San Diego High and Crawford High School, they're concerned that we will have less secretaries and counselors at our school since we're also small schools. And we do have four principals, so they're just concerned how they're gonna deal with it next year. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carlos. Okay, and for our student presentation tonight, we've got from the La Jolla Cluster and from Maryland's Middle School, the La Jolla Radio Program. And Dr. Meyer, if you want to introduce.
If I could please ask Mike Price, area superintendent for the La Jolla Cluster, to please come forward. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, doctor. Meyer, Mr. Barrera, members of the board, Mr. Koba, staff members, audience members. It gives the Cluster Schools, the La Jolla Cluster, great pleasure today to share with you one of the many programs that are available for students in the La Jolla Cluster. Which one caught my attention as I was visiting Maryland's Middle Schools? This is truly collaborative grassroots effort. It takes staff members, students, parents, community members, and our teachers to be able to put this program on. So at this time, what I'd like to do is introduce Principal Chris Hargraves, who'll come and begin our presentation. Chris.
I'd like to thank the board of education on behalf of Maryland's Middle School students and staff for inviting us to showcase our very own on-campus radio broadcasting station. Jennifer Yv, a former Maryland's parent, had a vision to offer a unique
I'm the ASP president at Patrick Henry High School and the ASP District Council President. Currently at Patrick Henry High School, we are preparing for our talent show, which I would like to invite you all to. It's on January 20th and it will be held at Lewis Middle School at 6 o'clock. We are also preparing for the Freedom for Hunger Food Drive, which will start next week as well. We are continuing to work with our WASC leadership team as well as meet with student and staff groups to continue discussing any possible changes and improvements to our school for the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. And a, coming from a fine family, we've got Carlos Bohorquez from Kearney High School.
Hello, I'm Carlos Bohorquez from Kearney High School. At my school, we're now just trying to put a winter formal together. There haven't been a winter formal in my school since 20 years ago, so we're trying to be the first ones to have a winter formal again. Another concern that we have at Kearney, like San Diego High and Crawford High School, they're concerned that we will have less secretaries or counselors at our school since we're also small schools. And we do have four principals, so they're just concerned how they're going to deal with it next year. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carlos. Okay, and for our student presentation tonight, we've got from the La Jolla Cluster and from Mearlens Middle School, the La Jolla Radio Program. And Dr. Meyer, if you want to introduce.
If I could please ask Mike Price, area superintendent for the La Jolla Cluster, to please come forward. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Doctor. Meyer, Mr. Barrera, members of the board, Mr. Cobas, staff members, audience members. It gives the Cluster Schools, the La Jolla Cluster, great pleasure today to share with you one of the many programs that are available for students in the La Jolla Cluster. Which one caught my attention as I was visiting Mearlens Middle School is this is truly collaborative grassroots effort. It takes staff members, students, parents, community members, or teachers to be able to put this program on. So at this time, what I'd like to do is introduce Principal Chris Hargraves, who'll come and begin our presentation. Chris.
I'd like to thank the Board of Education on behalf of Mearlens Middle School students and staff for inviting us to showcase our very own on-campus radio broadcasting station. Jennifer Yv, a former Mearlens parent, had a vision to offer a unique educational opportunity for students to learn all facets of the broadcasting industry. Jennifer discovered her passion for radio broadcasting when she entered this world after graduation from college. Excuse me. Her plan was to develop a course that allowed students to find joy in real-world learning experiences that would transfer to a love of learning in the classroom. The middle school year should provide multiple opportunities where students, where all students can pursue their passions and explore their interests. Jennifer's vision was to create an elective and club, after-school club, where students delved into the authentic work of writers, producers, broadcasters, and multimedia experts. Additionally, students have hands-on experience with fundraising and learning the business aspect of the industry. Mearlens Middle School is so very fortunate to have Jennifer's continued support and shared enthusiasm for learning. I'd like to introduce Jennifer Yv.
Hi. Thank you very much, Chris. That's a big introduction. Thank you very much for having us here and giving us the opportunity to share our program with you. I'm looking for the clicker. And so we started LJ Radio as a nonprofit 501(c)(3). As a nonprofit, we can apply for grants and solicit sponsorships and be a nonprofit radio station that way. Our mission is to reach out to any student who wants to learn about broadcasting. Our studios are open at lunch for everyone. The elective is for the 7th and 8th grade students and our club meets after-school for any student that's interested. We started as a web radio station. We now have a music creating station. The response from the students was so enthusiastic to radio that they decided to do TV. And so we supported their desire to do TV and so now they have their own TV station. They also design the station logos, they do the engineering, programming, marketing, and promotions. So LJ Radio is supported by the community. We have, we received a grant to start out from Los Petronas, a philanthropic organization. They supported with a grant for $14,000 to start our program. They've given us another $6,500 for our start into TV. So we're very excited with that. We've got more Mac Minis, more video cameras, and you can see one of our members here. He's very happy to be here. So let me introduce Andrew Schrader. He's our LJ Radio TV Station Manager. He's a graduate of San Diego State University in Journalism. He has experience in broadcasting, most recently as an anchor reporter editor at the KNSD College Sports Report. He'll now talk to you about what happens in the LJ Radio classrooms.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you for having us. My name is Andrew Schrader. Mr. Schradio, the kids call me. I am one of two teachers in the classroom. You'll hear from Kenton Mercina in just a moment. I took over LJ Radio's teaching duties a year and a half ago and I'm supposed to sum up what we do in the classroom in three minutes. I wish I had three hours, to be honest. I'm going to jump right into it, guys. In LJ Radio, I'm teaching these students how to make podcasts, video projects from scratch. You know, first and foremost, from day one, I'm teaching these guys, these students, the ethics of a quality broadcast, podcast, news article, the right way and the wrong way to present the news. So we have several projects going on, you know, on a weekly basis. To name a few, we have audio podcasts that the students are making, video projects based on campus events, current events going on at the school. These students are building these projects from scratch. They're learning how to use the equipment, conducting the interviews with teachers and fellow classmates. They work very well in groups. It's, it's very much a group-oriented class, not so much individualistic projects. We just started a brand-new LJ Radio blog. These students will learn how to write a correct news article as well as an opinion piece. We also started LJ Radio TV, as Jennifer mentioned, halfway through last year to where we, we make a video bulletin for the entire school to watch. 1,000 students, hundreds of staff members are playing this video bulletin on a daily basis as well as the audio bulletin. So as you can imagine, the responsibility of LJ Radio students is to report the news of the school and to be factual on a daily basis. And they seem to like it a lot, especially as you can see on the slides, we've had a chance to take them on several field trips around town to NBC, KUSI, KPBS, KCR at San Diego State. And I'm happy to report that in February, we will be traveling up to USC to see their School of Cinematic Arts. So I'm very excited about that. The students are very excited. And there's so much more that, that I've introduced to these students in my time as LJ Radio teacher. And I just really appreciate you guys giving us the chance to present the way our class runs. I'm going to let you hear from Kenton Mercina, the other half of the teachers in LJ Radio. He's going to give you a look into the future of LJ Radio. Thank you very much.
I co-teach the LJ Radio course along with Andrew and also the computer course on campus at Mearlens. The vision we share for the future of LJ Radio revolves around two things, making the course available to a larger number of students and becoming more involved in the community. As students in our district become more accustomed to and proficient on the netbook computers that are being rolled out into the classrooms over the next few years, the existing Exploring Computers course on our campus can evolve into more of a media arts graphic design course that utilizes activities and projects from LJ Radio. Offering an LJ Radio type cast for additional periods of the school day will allow more students to acquire real-world skills and understanding in the media arts and in broadcast journalism, which may spark an interest that leads to possibly a new career path for these students. We also have opportunities to work in the community. For example, right now, we're working on coordinating a project with local nursing homes and retirement communities where our students will go interview, record, and create podcasts of life experiences and life lessons of the elderly that can then be posted on our website and shared with young and old alike. We feel many things are possible with these, with this course, so our vision for the future is to turn what we now call LJ Radio into a highly desirable, well-rounded media arts course that students will benefit from and be inspired by for many years to come. Before we close our presentation, our station manager, Jordan Bowman, an 8th grader, would like to say a little bit about his experiences with the course while we show a short video that the students produced. Thank you. Jordan.
I'm Jordan Bowman, station manager of LJ Radio. I have been with LJ Radio for three years now, since 2008. Back then, I was technical manager and running the studio back, studio back then. Normally, I'm not on this side of the camera. Normally, I'm back behind the camera. LJ Radio has taught me how to expand my knowledge into more technical and different ways. In LJ Radio, I've learned Apple's Final Cut Express and the basis of a Windows and Mac server. A few students made this video that I'm about to play right now, if it'll go. Is there audio? There we go.
He's really very modest. You can't believe what he can do. I'm sure he gets in my office when I'm not there, but he has, I mean, he is so technologically savvy when it comes to computers and sound systems that he could run a corporation. I'm sure of it. Thank you very much and we invite you to visit our school at any time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mearlens also has a very formidable math team. Oh, yeah. You've dealt with this? That's firsthand experience. Great. Okay, and now if we could just take a quick minute, we had some great things going on with our schools over the holidays and I wanted to take, take a minute and acknowledge and thank some of the community partners who helped our kids over, over the break. And why don't we first ask Flavia Soria, the principal at Kimbrough, to come and tell us a little bit about the Santa's Village?
Absolutely. That's, that's what we, that's what got you here.
I'm still on vacation. I'm at a year-round school. My name's Flavia Soria, Kimbrough Elementary, and I've been at Kimbrough for a year and a half. They have a Santa's Village through SDPD and Toys for Tots. It was the 22nd annual event. In 2009, we had over 1,500 children that came through, so I'm not sure about 2010 yet, but all kindergarten through 3rd grade students at six of our neighborhood schools, Burbank, Logan, Rodriguez, Sherman, Perkins, and Kimbrough, all participate and have their children come through. And SDPD has a Santa and Mrs. Claus driving up in a blaring patrol car. And the auditorium at Kimbrough has been converted into a Santa's Village with these blow-ups, winter scenes, and Christmas trees, and it's just beautiful. And the kids, one at a time, go on the stage and sit with Santa and he talks to them for a minute and he hands them two or three toys. And then as they're walking out, the RSVP members are there at the door and handing them books. So they're walking away with toys and books and there are also some bicycles. So it's, it's really a great event for so many of our families that this is really the only Christmas they're going to have. And it's, it's just really, it's, well, you were there, Mr. Barrera, so you know how wonderful it is to see the kids smiling and, and getting to see Santa and.
Did President Barrera play Santa? Did he play Santa?
No, I got in, I got in line. I cut in line.
Oh. He got to see the kids lined up and, and got to see them go through. So it was, it was a really nice event and the other principals from the other schools were there as, as well to, to support and teachers and custodians. We had a lot of people that were there helping out. So it was a great opportunity for our community to, to have those gifts given.
Thank you, Flavia, and thanks to your staff and thanks to the San Diego Police Department.
I will. Thank you. I'll pass those things on. Thank you, everybody.
Good. Thanks very much. And then if I could ask Derek Mertenson from Adams Elementary and Cindy Martin from Central to come and talk a little bit about the Bikes for Kids Foundation?
I'm Mary Taylor.
Oh, great. Okay.
Good evening, Superintendent and board members. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk about something wonderful that happened during the holidays. I think as we go into January and our, my principal colleagues and I've just received our budget books where lots of money is being taken and we have to figure out how to make things work, I always believe that it's important to start and end every day with gratitude and to be thankful for what we have and what we've been given. And Central Elementary and other schools in City Heights were given a tremendous gift as you can see on the slideshow playing on the screens right now, thanks to the generous donation of Bill and Debbie Polikov from Polikov Financial Group. They have a Bike for Ki, Bikes for Kids Foundation and their vision is to provide bicycles to 3rd graders in underserved communities. And I've worked with the Polikov Financial Group, the Bikes for Kids Foundation for several years now and I want the opportunity, we want the opportunity to thank them publicly for what they do. They give a brand-new bicycle to every single 3rd grader at the schools that they adopt at a surprise assembly. So the kids come to the assembly thinking that they're going to get three bikes at a giveaway at a drawing and then you have a big Oprah moment where the curtains open and they realize that every child gets a bike and a helmet and it's an unbelievable experience. So to be able to say thank you and recognize that, if you can imagine, I don't know how many of you have children, what it's like on the night before Christmas trying to put together a bike. So it's under the tree in the morning. Imagine my principal colleagues and I and the community members trying to figure out how to put together 600 bikes and have it be a surprise so the kids don't know. It was a tremendous community effort. And in thanking the Bikes for Kids Foundation and wanting them to come tonight so that we could thank them, Mr. Polikov turned around and said, "I don't want the thanks. I have some things I'd like to say to the superintendent and to the Board of Education." So he is not, he wants to say thank you to us. So he said he wants the mic.
After thousands of bikes, I guess I deserve the bike. I mean, the mic. First of all, I want, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of your group. We, as an organization, are so very grateful to have had the opportunity to work with the schools in the San Diego Unified School District. As donors and philanthropists, we've had the opportunity to work and give to schools and youth organizations across San Diego County. We've given out over 23,000 new bicycles to, to these children over the years. We've worked with the award-winning and high-performing Poway Unified School District for years and in the years of giving, we've never asked to address or speak to the Board of Education or to the superintendent. But after working with the five schools that we worked with in City Heights this year, in particular, under the leadership of Dr. Tony Burks, coordination efforts, and Principal Cindy Martin, Derek, Mary, Kim, John, Jean, we felt compelled to come and ask to speak to this, to this group this evening. Our message to you is that we are universally impressed with the sense of community that's been built in these schools in the City Heights area. Each site leader engaged this donation with a sense of gathering the community together to assemble these bikes and present them in surprise assemblies. The principals, all working with their own, their own ways to make the assemblies special and to attract local media attention. A gift such as this is not an easy one for the school to receive because it takes work and it takes coordination. From the district distribution people, Victor Para, Richard Ayala, to the teachers of the 3rd grade students, to the principals, without exception, we were universally impressed and look forward to continuing a partnership with your district. We applaud your community-based reform efforts and see it as working in remarkable ways. Now let me summarize this for a second. Just say that in my business life and in my personal life today, I'm president and CEO of a wonderful, wonderful company here. And in fact, the last two years in a row, I've been a finalist and most admired CEO in San Diego. I'm the secret Santa for the Boys and Girls Club here in San Diego. I've had the opportunity to sit in the backseat of the presidential limo with the President of the United States. And the reason I tell you that is, is because I, I think I have a fairly good, acute way to, to really assess talent and to assess leadership. And the people that I have, have dealt with in your organization showed all of those. When you deal with thousands of bicycles, you just don't go to Walmart and say, "Give me thousands of bicycles." We got our bikes from China, they then are offloaded at Long Beach, they then have to be delivered here in San Diego. We deliver them in local places and then our volunteers or your volunteers now come into place. In, in their private time, they, they get trucks, they come to our places, they pick up the bicycles, then they have to be assembled. And even when they assemble them, it doesn't always go right. And in their private time, they take, and they're always fixing stuff. They're fixing kickstands, they're putting more air in, they've blown tires, they're fixing it all. And then we have the, the actual help in giving away these, these gifts. So I want to come to you to say thank you for the people and the cooperation. You've allowed us to make our job of giving these gifts to, to kids very easy. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill and Debbie. Great job. Okay, now to the fun stuff. We'll get to the superintendent's information report and administrative assignments. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Barrera. Why do I always have to follow the tough acts? I mean, Bill, that was just terrific. I mean, it encapsulates what we're trying to do in this community. We're bringing our campuses and leadership and teaching and classified staffs with the parents and the children, the trustees and the central office together in a very positive quality, value-added way. And I think you said it eloquently. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now to Monday, but still, I think, of relevance to all of us. First and foremost, we have one personnel assignment. The Board has approved the assignment of Richard Del Principi to Vice Principal Monroe Clark Middle School, Area 9 Office of Deputy Superintendent Academics. That's our one personnel appointment for the evening. What I'd like to do now, if I could, President Barrera, is provide a few Superintendent comments. It was first and foremost, welcome back to the traditional staff that is back in the saddle as of last week. Our year-round schools will be joining us in another couple of weeks. I've had the opportunity to get out to the campuses in the time back, consistent with going out with area superintendents to get a sense of what's going on. I did have the opportunity with Mike Price, Marion Phelps, this week and last week, to touch base. We were at Spreckels Elementary last Monday, and this past Monday, yesterday, at the Language Academy K-8, clearly doing some very good work there in different settings. One, a basic, traditional elementary school with a special focus on learning and teaching in its own right. And then the Language Academy, the Spanish immersion school that we have that draws kids there from across the district, very positive in both cases. And I've updated my second semester school schedule, a few more schools to tuck in, but the goal there is to get out to another 35 to 40 schools this semester, in addition to any other special events. What has caught our attention, both for the Board and the staff as a whole, and I think obvious in some of the conversation tonight, is the budget. We have put together a plan over the next four weeks to develop the campus budgets, and running in parallel is a refinement of the central office budgets. A lot of discussion that will occur across this district, both at the campus level and in elevating itself through the area superintendents and clearly to the Board. We'll work very closely as a team across the board with all the stakeholder groups and go from there. Yesterday, we heard from the Governor, encouraged but cautionary, I would say, is the way to view that budget. This coming week, Ron Little and the Chief Financial Office Team will be at a conference that will be listing, along with most of the other school districts and financial leadership in Southern California, to understand what that budget really means, how you translate into impacts on San Diego Unified, and we'll keep you abreast of what's going on there. There are some interesting things looking at terms of community schools. I had an opportunity to talk with some leadership from the Collaborative, its association with the City Heights Schools, trying to bring people together to look across a feeder pattern without any isolation of who and what you advocate for. And so I sat down with Tad Parsons from the Price Charities Group, and I think he'll be reaching out to members of the Board as well to talk about how another philanthropic, community-focused group could support us in our interest in pushing, refining community schools. In addition, I've had an opportunity to talk with the Charter Schools about the concept of renewed and in-depth partnership, a whole lot more to deal with in both the Collaborative and with the Charter Schools. But what I like about this is the ability of different groups to reach out to us and want to work with us and try to understand, and even in these tough financial times, how we can work together to make all the academic excellence goals that are necessary for us. And then the last thing I want to bring up is, back in October, I think we all recall with a great degree of tragedy, a discussion of suicide among young people. It resulted in a evening vigil on a Sunday night here at the Ed Center. Coming out of that recognition of concern for safety and security for our children, we committed, we put together a resolution that the Board approved to go forward with the development of a task force, a review of our policies and practices, to make sure that we were doing all we could to educate, detect, intervene, prevent, in terms of bullying. And I'm talking about all aspects of bullying, whether it be the virtual cyber type of bullying or the physical. We have a task force that includes membership from a variation of groups, including the center across the blocks from us, the Anti-Defamation League and others. We're out there trying to do all that is possible to create a positive, safe environment. It comes back to us, I think, with a recognition that the kids are out there in front of us. Last Friday, President Barrera, Vice President Evans, and Area Superintendent Phelps and I had an opportunity to be at Madison High School, where the kids, of their own volition, put together a campus-wide awareness campaign dealing with a pledge to eliminate hurtful language. It culminated in a rally last Friday at noon, where all of the student body met at the quadrangle, signed a butcher block building-wide paper against hurtful language, and then were issued a wristband in recognition of their commitment. We're going to actually have the opportunity to view a six-minute video, very powerful, poignant, student-made message on safe campuses and anti-bullying, something that should be at the highest level of priorities for our school district. And I think it clearly is by the actions we've taken, the words and the deeds that are going on. And there's a whole lot more to follow on the task force as well. So I think while it has been a quick 10 days back and certainly shaped by the budget, there's a lot of positive to also focus on. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. We'll move to Board Information Reports. Mr. Beiser, do you want to begin tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to share experiences that I had last week. Last week, I was still on Christmas vacation, so I had the opportunity to, Monday through Friday during the day, to partner with the Area Superintendent, David Lorden, and I really want to applaud him taking the time. And what we did is we went around and visited schools in Sub District B. We visited Hancock, Kumaya, Miller, Tierra Santa, Vista Grande, Deportola Middle, Farnborough Middle, Sarah High School, Benchley Weimberger, Daleard, Foster, Gage, Green, Hardy, Hurst, Marvin, Lewis Middle School, Pershing Middle School, and Patrick Henry High School. And the value of getting out into those school sites and visiting with the people that are helping our kids, trying to reach out to those folks, I just really applaud the efforts of the people in our sites. They're doing a great job. Especially want to point out that Lewis Middle School is a school that has come out of program improvement, and they're doing a lot of things at Lewis Middle School that we can learn from. And I really think that was a very positive experience last week. So that's what I'd like to share with the Board and encourage family, parents, to get into, go into their schools and volunteer, really help them so that they can do a better job of supporting our students. Thank you.
I was at Madison High School last week with the Superintendent, and I too was very impressed by what the students are doing. In fact, I have the wristband right here that the students had made and distributed. But what was so impressive was, I remember back a couple of years ago, I met with an elementary school in the community, and the parents were talking about what was most important to them in their education. And the first thing they mentioned was not reading or math scores, but that they wanted their kids to be good people, good citizens, and to have a family environment at the school. And at the high school that we visited, Madison High School, that's what Richard Nash described in terms of a real family meeting, a family feeling at the school. And I remember when I met him a couple of years ago, it was on a Saturday, when he was working with a group of 10 students who had been failing and mentoring them and working with them to help them along in school. And that kind of epitomized what was going on at that school. But what was most impressive was the fact that this was totally student-organized, this particular rally. We developed task force and talked about things and tried to do what we can. You know, you can tell a lot about a school by visiting, particularly a high school, visiting at lunchtime and seeing what's happening between the students and who's mingling with whom and who is not. And this was a very diverse and open school where everybody was participating. The students were totally behind it in terms of organizing it and getting the other students. This was not a lecture from teachers on good behavior. This is students working with other students, talking about the hurtfulness of certain types of language, how we all have to work together, and it was just extremely impressive. I really want to, I'm looking forward to their presentation at our next Board meeting. The other thing that's going on is, as the Superintendent mentioned also, is the development of the budget. And I'm actually sending out and emailing some of my constituents tomorrow to really remind them that during this month of January, they need to show up at their schools, their school-site council meetings, their parent teacher meetings, meetings with the principals, because we really are giving a lot of power and authority to the schools to make decisions about what they need. Our new Governor Brown has said he wants to move a lot of the money in decision-making from Sacramento back to the local level. And here at the local level, we really want to make it even more local by the parents and teachers and community members who are involved to really sit down with your principal and others and talk about what, in this very difficult budget environment, what is absolutely most important and what do we need to preserve. And so I think this is going to be a very important, I would just invite everybody to get involved during the month of January and participate in this as the Superintendent is proceeding to develop his proposed budget, which we will look at in February.
Ms. Jackson?
Certainly, I echoed the welcome back to all of our staff after the holiday break, and I know they all came back to tons and tons of work, and I thank them for that. Cluster meetings are still occurring. I think this coming Monday will be the cluster meeting at Morris High School. We had Lincoln and Crawford cluster meetings last night, and very well attended. And I think as we had our workshop today, I mentioned that the attendance at our cluster meetings is exploding, and people are coming, and people are asking questions. So it is truly taking power back to the people, and they're starting to realize that and embrace that. The other thing I'd like to ask this evening is a moment of silence for one of our retired teachers. We know that during the Christmas break, there was a bus accident over in Egypt, and one of the people that was killed was one of our retired teachers. Jean Byrd will lay to rest this coming Friday, but I ask for a moment of silence on her behalf. Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Thanks, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Monet?
Well, it's hard to believe it's been a month since Mr. Beiser and I have joined this Board. It seems a lot longer. I'm sure it seems longer to some of my colleagues as well. I have met with so many parents, principals, and the thing I've been consistently impressed with is the dedication of the staff at all levels, from the custodians to the teachers to all the staff and the district office staff. And I guess tonight was particularly, it was great to see all the students up here tonight because it reminds us, as we spend our day with adults, talking about budgets and numbers, that these bright, impressive young people are what it's all about. So, thank you.
I'd also like to very much just echo the comments of the Superintendent and Dr. Evans, thanking the students at Madison High School for the event that they organized against hurtful language on Friday. It was really impressive, and it's going to be great to have them here and present their video. And just very briefly on where we're at in the budget process, so we've talked about this a lot. The budget process is a messy process, and there are a lot of steps that we've got to go through before, we're at a place that we've got a balanced budget for the next school year for 2011-12. But as we've talked about all, since the fall, one of the key points in that process, still early on, but a very critical point in that process, is the release of the proposed budget by the Governor in January. And yesterday, for the first time certainly since I've been on this Board, we had unexpected and encouraging news come from Sacramento. And we've got a long way to go, and, you know, it's going to be a difficult process over the next several months. But the difference in having a Governor actually step up and with his actions, not with his words, but with his actions, demonstrate a commitment to public education in the state was extraordinary. I think most of you have seen that in his proposed budget, Governor Brown has said that education, K-12 education, has borne the brunt of the budget cuts over the last few years, and that he is protecting K-12 education from further budget cuts moving forward. It's going to take time, as the Superintendent said, for our staff to really go through the budget in detail and understand specifically what this means for San Diego Unified. And this is only the first step in the budget process. The budget has to be passed by the Legislature. The Governor is proposing that a ballot initiative goes on the ballot for voters to weigh in later in the spring. But I would actually ask everybody here who's concerned about the fate of public education to, in some way, send an email, send a letter, send a phone call, communicate to Governor Brown how extraordinary, in the midst of the greatest budget crisis that our state has faced, how extraordinary it was for him yesterday to make a commitment to public education. And it certainly puts us in a position that I think we're going to be, we're going to be in a stronger position to deal with this budget crisis going forward as a result of his actions yesterday. So, thank him for that. Okay, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Second. Please vote. Okay, well, what we're going to do tonight with the consent agenda, we've got one speaker. And any item on the consent agenda that any Board member wants polled, we can poll, and we'll discuss those items at the end of the meeting. But the other items that don't get polled, we want to just approve in a single vote. But first, I'm going to ask our one public speaker, Joni Collins, who wants to speak on Item E20.
Good evening, Board members, and welcome, new Board members. Superintendent Koba and Deputy Superintendent Academics, Nellie Meyer, and Deputy Superintendent Phil Stover, and our student reps, Carlos and Nancy and Ms. Ward. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to take time out. I know we're thinking about a lot of stuff, and that was very touching, the everything. And I have to say, it was nice to hear our truck driver, the truck driver, and our supervisor's name mentioned as a part of the bicycles that were being delivered. It really touched me. And it kind of brings me back to what I want to talk about and what I want to support is bringing things in-house. And I think it fills the community, that we're, the vision of the community, having our truck drivers deliver the stuff to our schools. You know, they're fingerprinted, they know the custodians, they work together. Last, for the new Board members, last year, it was, I think, the last Board member meeting in December, this was voted on, bringing the paper back in-house. This was critical because it had been a long time. We had other vendors delivering the paper. It's been over a year now. It's up for, I want to support this because it's been proven to be cost-effective. And it's, and we're happy to do it. I wanted to take time out. I also, one of the stock clerks that's been there for 25 years scribbled on a paper and wrote down some notes for me. He said, "Can we also bring back some of the other items like that we use, staff and sites, toilet paper and Kleenex, and also some universal products to look at, some of the custodian supplies that everybody uses?" I think this might, we might want to look at this as some cost savings. And again, I think it brings it back to a community feeling, keeping it in-house, and I think it makes good business sense as well. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chair. Okay, do any Board members wish to poll any items from the consent agenda?
Yes, I want to poll E3, but I thought our understanding was if we just want to comment on it, we could comment on it.
Anything that's polled, we'll discuss at the end of the meeting. Not yet.
All right. I thought we can do still comments before.
Great. E3?
Yes.
And any other?
I understand Item E16 is being asked, is that being polled by staff to go back?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Items E10 and E16 have been withdrawn by staff.
Okay, 16, yeah. And I just wanted to make a comment on E16. I know some Board members have raised some questions about that being outsourced, and I think the concerns that were raised, and hopefully this will be done in-sourced and save money as well. So that's why that's being pulled back and off the consent calendar. So I would move approval of the consent calendar with the polling of Item E3?
Yes.
And the withdraw of Item 10 and 16.
Yeah, I'd also like to poll Item 29.
And 29. And otherwise, the rest, move approval.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second to move the rest of the consent agenda. Please vote.
Please vote. Okay, great. Okay, so let's move on to item, our student instructional matters, and this is item F1, our math task force update. Superintendent and Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, President Bure. I think you and the board and the community as a whole is aware that we have made, and I think refining our priorities for this year and trying to focus on the core few, one is math. We recognize that things move along in a very successful way with arithmetic through fifth grade, but as we approach pre-algebra, algebra, things start to get a little bit crazy for us. And this task force that we've put together has been doing some very good work to collaborate, to research, to validate practices, and you've not had the opportunity to be briefed by them. And Nellie has been keeping close tabs. I went to their inaugural meeting and saw what a broad-based grouping of folks, including university and community members are part of this. So I'm going to ask Nellie to introduce for Mr. Grano and the team.
Yes, very briefly, Bill kicked off our beginning of the year with the math initiative, and we're very excited about that. And as a result, we have created a task force that is looking at not only our new book adoption for the elementary schools, but also doing some analysis with recommendations. And tonight, we're going to present an update on the progress that we have made to date. And I'd like to introduce Robert Grano, who is the Director of Professional Learning and Student Programs. And he has brought with him a wonderful team, who he will introduce, and we will listen to tonight.
Okay, there we go. Let me get the technical difficulties straightened out. We actually came, I actually came earlier and made sure it was all working, and of course now. It has a mind of its own. Okay, I think I've got it.
We won't have this problem with technology.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Have to bear with me just for a couple of seconds until I get it.
Okay. Once again, my name is Robert Grano. I'm the Director for Student Programs and Professional Learning, and I am the chairperson of the Math Task Force. I'd like to introduce a couple of our task force members. We have Sherri Lawson, who's a Program Manager for Mathematics, and we have Joe Frescatore, who's on our task force. He's the VP at Oak Park. And Carol Treglio, who is a Math Resource Teacher at Morris High School. So thank you, three of you, for being here tonight after a long day. What I wanted to do this evening was to tell you a little bit about why the Math Task Force exists, and actually go through our website in real time for you. We have a presence on the World Wide Web. Everything that we do with regard to the Math Task Force is available for everybody to see as soon as we get the information. So if you go to the www.sandy.net website, and you go to the department section and scroll down to "our department," which is the Instructional Support Curriculum Department, we've named it thusly so that people understand who we are and what we do. On the left-hand side of the screen, we have our Math Task Force, and I'd like to go over that just for a couple of moments. Again, we post everything on the Math Task Force website, and I'd like to start with the reason, Dr. Meyer alluded to it, why we even exist, and for some reason, it's not coming up. Okay, let's hope the other parts of it work. Daryl, can you help me with this? Because a lot of the presentation is on this, and it was working before. In any event, at the leadership meeting that was held in August at the beginning of the school year, Superintendent Koba asked us to have a laser-like focus in the area of mathematics. And with that charge, we started the Math Task Force. The Math Task Force is comprised of many members in the community, and one of our other members will talk to you about that in a couple of moments. I was going to go over with you for a couple of minutes how the Math Task Force operates. At every one of our meetings, we start the meeting with statistics that we would like to share with the Math Task Force. There are math statistics. We take a look at the math statistics, the data, and we analyze it, we talk about it, we try to draw some conclusions as a group, and we just kind of start to wrap our minds or our brains around what needs to happen in the area of math. The math data analysis is then followed by some sort of a math problem. At every one of our meetings, we begin with a math problem. At our first meeting, we had Sherri Lawson present a math problem. Our second meeting, we had Ron Suie, a math teacher at Scripps Ranch High School, present a problem. And at our third meeting, we'll have Dr. Van Catraman, who is a professor at San Diego State, present a problem for us. So that's a way of getting our math brains working. And Daryl was still working on this. Sorry about that.
Nine-year-old.
Maybe that kid from Ireland can come back and help us with it. Another important aspect of the Math Task Force is the fact that we're trying to integrate our work with the work of other standing committees. So at our very first meeting, in addition to our Math Task Force data analysis and our math problem, we also had Dr. Salazar do a very complete A through G presentation for our Math Task Force. The reason why I felt that that was important to do is because what we want to do is integrate the work of both teams, both committees. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a couple of moments. The A through G committee has about four standing subcommittees, professional development, curriculum and instruction, interventions, and they have an additional one that talks about district-level sort of concerns that might have to do with A through G. We fashioned our committees after the same ones that are on A through G. And what our hope is that when our committees finish meeting and they have made their recommendations, that we can merge the committee, the recommendations from both sets of committees. This way, we will reduce the duplicity, and we'll have hopefully a common document with common recommendations that will fill the bill for both Math Task Force and for our A through G committee as well. Looks like Daryl's still working on that, and I really would like to show you some of this. I'm going to pass it over at this point to Joe Frescatore. Joe is going to talk a little bit about the subcommittee that he's working on currently, and then at that point, Sherri Lawson will speak, and hopefully it will come back to me, and I can give you some of the details via the website that we have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Treglio, and on the committee are many, many folks, and they're from all different walks of life. A lot of them, because I've been in the math community for a long time, I know quite a number of them. We have professors from San Diego State, Nadine Bazook, who has really had a long relationship with this district and has shared CPEC grants and so on for us, as well as Susan Nickerson. She's been doing the same kinds of work. We have actually someone who just got his doctorate from UCSD, Osvaldo Soto, who is a teacher at Henry, Patrick Henry, and who works with the candidates for Math for America. So there are lots of esteemed colleagues. We have lots of people who were resource teachers, both at the central office and elsewhere. We have principals. One who I worked with closely at Scripps Ranch High when I was teaching there is Elizabeth Gillingham, who taught math for a number of years before becoming a VP and principal. Sarah Sullivan is another one, who's always been involved in the math community and is now principal, well, she's been principal at Pershing for quite a while. And so we have lots of different folks, people like Ivan Alba, who did work for our district for a while, and is consulting in other districts now, and he's on the task force. And we were to kind of divide it up so that we could be on a committee that we liked. So we had our first choice in what we chose to be part of. So Joe is going to speak about the different choices.
Good evening. My name is Joe Frescatore, and I am the Vice Principal at Oak Park, and I was pleased to be asked to be on the Math Task Force. Prior to becoming a Vice Principal, I was a math resource teacher at a site. And following suit with Superintendent Koba's emphasis on a laser-like focus for mathematics, the Math Task Force coordinated our efforts into three subcommittees made up of some of the people that you just heard about from Carol. I kind of summarized into about a sentence the work of each of the subcommittees. The Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee, it's focused on the alignment between curriculum and instruction, and we're trying to ensure meaningful and engaging instruction that fosters students' conceptual understanding. The Student Services and Intervention Support Subcommittee identifies structures and resources that are currently in place and try to ensure full utilization of those resources and structures to really provide the support of our most needy students and to really help them achieve. And the Professional Development Subcommittee, which I'm part of, is working to plan and provide teachers with meaningful and sustainable professional development, truly to build capacity at the school site as a means to positively impact student achievement. So those are the, a little summary of the three subcommittees, and I'm really happy to be part of the Math Task Force. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sherri Lawson, the Program Manager for Mathematics. And it's one thing to get together at a committee and talk and brainstorm, but things are starting to happen, and that's what I'm here to share with you. As conversations took place at the A to G task force, many of the concerns and many of the conversations were the same sort of things that occurred at the Math Task Force. The same sort of ideas and concerns were bubbling up. Three things came out very clearly. One had to do with student engagement. One had to do with the use of technology as far as engagement, online learning. And the last had to do with collaboration, to have us working better together so that we weren't in department silos who never came together and had conversation. In that regard, I want to share with you three things that are already happening. One has to do with some work that is ongoing with the County Online Task Force, and this is a collaborative effort with San Diego Unified, Poway Unified, and the San Diego County Office of Ed. We will be piloting, some of our teachers, applications are out there now, an online algebra unit, two different units, that we can pilot and see what kind of engagement we see, what kind of learning is happening in the algebra realm. So that's ongoing, and will take place the end of January through March. The other has to do with a new grant that we just received, which was a technology and math collaborative effort. And it's an EETT grant, and we will be focusing our energies on working with sixth and seventh grade math teachers to try and see if we can improve math instruction, thereby math achievement, so that more of our students will be prepared to go to algebra in eighth grade as opposed to into algebra readiness. And the last one has really been exciting, and this has been a math and ed tech collaborative that we have just created with our new adoption, an Envision Grade III I-21 unit. And it's, if I can take a military likeness, it's showing what, you know, when you hear about the Marines being all that they can be, or the Army, is that the Army that can be all that they can be? Well, we're looking at an Envision topic being all that it can be in an I-21 classroom. And we have combined the math and the ed tech folks together, created a unit which will be kicking off January 21st for a select group of third and fourth grade teachers and some math resource folks to get some feedback. And then we will be putting this on ERO for our third and fourth grade teachers to come and engage in experiencing, and then working with some experts to create their own Envision Math I-21 classroom units and be all that it can be. So beyond conversations, things are happening. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to give the technology one more try here, and hopefully we'll get it to work. And if not, we will call it a night. And it looks like we might call it a night because I can't scroll down on this. But just give me one second. Oh, okay, here we go. So this is an example of the minutes from our first meeting. We talked about the laser-like vision, and I already discussed that, but I wanted to go a little bit into the data, just an example, not to give you too much information. But here's an example of the type of data that we shared with our Math Task Force members. This is a graph that was developed in our office, a bar graph that shows percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced on CSTs in mathematics in 2010. And obviously, you can see that progression from grades two to 11, and see how we generally have a downward.
Yeah, this is the cliff that I mentioned early in the conversation.
Yeah, this is the cliff, unfortunately, which we want to reverse. And then we have another slide here, performance levels on CST in mathematics, and we group proficient and advanced together, and anything that was not proficient and advanced is not proficient, obviously because of the basic and below. And that gives you a really nice look at how that pans out. And I have a really interesting one. It's kind of hard for me to see. Oh, gosh. Here it is. This is the comparison between elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. It shows adequate yearly progress in mathematics, and it's a historical graph that begins in 2006 through 2009, and we can see some of the trends that were happening. So again, we have different types of data at the different meetings, and it is a spring board to discussion. If I can, this kind of looks like a Mac to me, and I'm not as used to the Mac. But just one final item. When you go to that Math Task Force website on the left-hand side, if you want to just kind of browse through some of these areas, we have the committee membership here, and it looks like it's working now. And there you can see the different members on the committees that we talked about. We have a spot where we post all math documents that we speak about, and this happens to be a very important one, Statement on Competencies in Mathematics Expected for Students Entering College, and then our overall math membership. So just in summary, I just want to let you know that we'll be meeting several more times, and then we hope that by early spring, we will bring recommendations to Superintendent Koba with regard to the three different areas, and hopefully we will be able to take action on those recommendations.
If I could wrap up for you. Robert, thank you, and to the team as well.
Thank you.
Two points I'd like to wrap with, and one is that of integration. What you're seeing here is some reference made to A to G, to I-21, to partnership with other school districts in the county, and to doing it in real time. Many of the other districts in the county are watching as Powway and San Diego Unified came together to work on that online tutorial and to bring some teachers to pilot it this semester. So it's a matter of collaborating on many dimensions. The other thing I'd like to mention is that things are happening, not just meeting and talking about it. The Envision Math curriculum has been implemented across the elementary schools, and among the things I go looking for when I'm out with the school visits is, let's go in and take a look at what's happening in the math classes. So while we're conceptually developing, we're also acting on it, and this team and its broad-based involvement of many different people, both within and outside the district, I think is a positive for us. And the final point, we're doing it with the resources we have, okay, and/or the pro bono efforts, contributions of the community. So it's not like money is being spent. We're putting our actions and our available resources together.
Dr. Evans?
Just a couple of questions, Mr. Grano. I'll just give them both to you. First of all, I'm curious if you, I realize there's a broad group that's working on this, but if you have surveyed the math teachers in some way, in terms of what they feel they need in terms of improving their instruction. need in terms of improving their instruction. And then second, the second question has to do is, is if you've really looked at individual exceptional teachers. And just as an example, the principal at Mason pointed out to me that she, a fifth grade teacher who had 100% of his students at either proficient or advanced, more actually in advanced, in math and, and he was kind of working by himself and so she had him take on one of the other teacher's classes a little week and got them up to 97% or something. So the one question is about, you know, getting the input from them in terms of what they feel they need versus what we've kind of figured out the top that they need. And then secondly, if there's a way to kind of highlight and, and study the ones who are doing really well.
Right. One of the ways that we've surveyed teachers is through another committee that I co-chair is the RTI Committee. And we just recently sent out a survey to all teachers with regard to student services and interventions in all areas, not just mathematics. We have, and what we expect to, to get back from the teachers are different ways that, that they provide services to students who are not meeting their grade level expectations. So that survey's already been sent out and hopefully we'll be getting results. I have a deadline on the, on the survey. It's after the year-round schools return. So we have, we have begun to do some of the district-wide surveys. With regard to looking at, at promising practices, we have not yet begun that, other than we have some of our very best math teachers in the district on the committee. So those people are informing our committee with regards to, with regard to the best practices they know of. At one point in the very near future, we're going to be starting instructional rounds in our district. We have a training on March 16th and 17th. Although this is not really part of Math Task Force, it's another way that, that I will be able to get into classrooms and look and see what's happening in some of our, our classrooms in the area of math. So we'll incorporate all of that, that data and, and inform our decisions about the direction of mathematics in San Diego Unified School District.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Visor.
As a math teacher, I applaud your efforts. I've worked with Ivan Alba for the last six years at my school and I just really think it's exciting that you guys are really, have, have a very broad range of folks involved in the different subcommittees. It's, also one thing that I did learn from visiting several elementary schools last week out in Tierra Santa and San Carlos is that some of the teachers and, and have mentioned that some of the Envision math for their grade level, they were, they're hoping that it could be a little more rigorous. So that's something that maybe, you know, maybe you've already heard that and you're looking at opportunities to have maybe supplemental questions for challenge, students and teachers that feel that they want to challenge their kids even more to increase the rigor. So I think that's really good. And I, I also applaud your efforts to have model lessons with the I-21 because that's another thing that I've been hearing from teachers and educators out at the sites, is that there's, with the Promethean boards and the technology, there's just a lot of time to really put together one high-quality lesson so that to the extent we could get a collaboration of educators to create a model lesson with the Promethean boards and things like that and then share that out, I think that would be really welcome.
And also on that same note, part of the EETT grant was the purchase of Safari Montage. So we'll be able to actually roll out or push out more lessons that way. And as you know, we have an online database that will help us to deliver lessons through Safari Montage. It's just one more tool that we can use with our students and, and teachers. Thanks, Robert. Thank you. Thank you very much. Board members, if I can ask, I noticed we've got some students, I think from Hoover High School here that wanted to speak on item I-4, so if we could actually move to item I-4. So this is a resolution mitigated negative declaration for the Hoover. So we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Move to move the item or to approve the item?
To approve.
Approve the item.
There's a motion to approve the item. We've, we're moving the item.
Because I have, I have discussion on the item.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion? I'll, I'll second the motion. Let me, we've got some public speakers, so I'll start with Chuck Podorsky, Minta Ricard, Levon Simunides, Jeffrey Simunides, Arva Reinike. Okay. We're going to, we're going to actually limit public comments to a minute apiece because we've got several speakers. Make it work, Chuck.
Absolutely. Hi, my name's Dr. Charles Podorsky, Principal of Hoover High School. My address and home address are both on file at the district. President Barrera, members of the School Board of Education, I have three strong core beliefs regarding the education of our children. One, if we have high expectations for our students, in many cases, if not most cases, they'll far exceed those expectations. Each year at Hoover High School, we give away over $800,000 in college scholarships to our seniors as we send them off across the country to great universities like Berkeley, Stanford, Brown, UCLA, and UCSD, just to name a few. We have one student even courting MIT this year and who I'm sure is going to do amazing things at MIT. Secondly, I believe that all students deserve a facility that matches the expectations we have for their students, for our students. I have advocated and fought for, in many cases, as our district staff knows, that the facilities in the City Heights area be looked after. That's why I'm extremely proud of the campus improvement design that we have for, have developed with our community partners. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Chuck. Okay. Minta Ricard, Levon Simunides, Jeffrey Simunides.
My name is Minta Ricard. I live right behind Hoover High School on Highland Avenue. My husband and I have lived there for over 50 years. We attended Hoover. All four of our children attended Hoover High School and we're very proud of the school. And we have followed with absolute delight this Proposition S that is rejuvenating and bringing Hoover back up to what it used to be. The students there are absolutely wonderful. I work with the Alumni Association and I'm up there on the campus quite a bit. We wish to thank the planners and the architects and the engineers for consulting with the neighborhood by way of local meetings. They listened and modified their plans to accommodate us and our concerns. We were there when Hoover lights disappeared off the field and went up to Patrick Henry in 1978 with the promise that they would come back again. Now we have the chance to get them back and we're asking you, please bring those lights back to our school for our kids.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Hi, my name is Levon Simunides and I am an alumni of Hoover. Our children went to Hoover, I'm an employee, and I love Hoover. So I didn't think I would be back here over 30 years later asking for these lights. They took the lights from us in 1978 and they told us that they were just going, what they were going to do when they first started rebuilding the school, they were going to put them under and they were going to store them underneath the bleachers and all, when they moved our field going on one way, on Minlo, and then put it on the other way. So anyway, what I'm saying is, is that they promised us that we would get our lights. They said, well, we're just going to loan them to Patrick Henry. When we get the field done and the conduit in, they will come back to Hoover. But right now, Patrick Henry needs them. Well, they didn't come back and when we went to the board and we were on the parent group, PTA, and all other committees that we could get on to get them back, they told us that they were, belonged to the district and we didn't have to have them back. I'm asking you to please return our lights. It's a great school and the best kids in the world. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Robert.
Hi, I'm Arva Reinike. I'm an alumni from Hoover. My three kids went to Hoover. And sports are a very important, vital part in helping children to be well-rounded and keeping them off the street. Strong parenting is also vital and parents, parental support is extremely hard when the games are during the day because there's no lights for nighttime games. My kids thank me endlessly for going to each one of their sporting events and I had three at Hoover at the same time and they were all in different sports. Sports become a vital, became a vital part of their life and instilled good habits and the desire to always do their best in everything. And that makes a great person on and off the field. We have 41 grandchildren in our family and 12 great-grandchildren. And believe me, I've been to many, many football games at all kinds of high schools around San Diego for our family.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Simunides and, and I'm a former student, graduated 1976 from Hoover High. Also played on the football team and, you know, having the lights gave you as a student some energy during the day, knowing that you were going to be playing that night and being able to, you know, perform in front of your family and so on and so forth. And, you know, and being in the, the economic downfall that we are in and being where Hoover High is, is located, it's not in a, in a real well-to-do area, there's no better way than to bring the families together in the evenings on a Friday night economically. They can afford it and so on and so forth. And the, the staff and the teachers are second to none there as far as keeping an eye on, on the, on the kids and, and participating. It also gives a chance for the teachers to come back that evening and to bring their families and intermingle with the students. And I want to thank you and I am a supporter of, of bringing the lights back. Ms. Jackson, thank you so much for calling for a moment of silence and I want to thank you all for saying the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Tom Klaby and Donna Lynn Klaby.
I too am a graduate of Hoover High School. I'm also a graduate of all the schools in City Heights, Euclid, Central, Woodrow Wilson, and Hoover. And I firmly believe that the way you instill students to be proud of their schools with pride and Friday night lights is the way to do it. I noticed up here it says skills and motivation, pride and, and pride of the school and school spirit is extremely important. And I am a member of the foundation, the Hoover High Foundation. I'm also a member of the Hoover High Alumni Association. And if any of you would like to have a brick put up on the wall at Hoover, I'm sure that we can, with your name on it, we, we can sure, make sure that it gets there prominently located. But Friday night lights is important for the kids and it's important for the neighborhoods and it's important for the parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Donna Lynn Klaby, the spouse of Mr. Klaby of 59 years. We're celebrating, we're a class of 52.
Do you have a brick, Ms. Klaby?
I want to say out of City Heights, wasn't known by that at that time. However, you're looking at a former councilman of 13 years of an East County city. He's a graduate of Hoover High School. He went into the Korean conflict and came home, raised three children. They're all graduates. A daughter is in mortgage banking and our son is a deputy district attorney here in Cal, in San Diego. You probably recognize the name, Klaby. We're very proud of Hoover. I am also chairman of the memory wall or the memorial wall where tiles are piling up in my garage to be put on from the result of the 80th celebration. We had over 400 alumni there along with staff. The enthusiasm that you show as a board of getting your community and your parents involved as community, although we do know there are those who do not want the lights, please bring back the lights. I was a song leader in 1952, had pom-poms and was really the girl to look at and this is a gentleman that caught her.
Cree Morris, Leslie Simmons, Susan Harrigan, Dawn Anderson, Ron Anderson, and Ron Lardisabel.
My name's Cree Morris. My address is on file. I'm the head football coach at Hoover High School. I got the job last May. I've been doing this for 20 years. I've been fortunate enough to travel the world playing football. I played up at Orange Glen High School in Escondido and graduated from there. Fortunate enough to play in the stadium in the finals. There's a, same thing I said at the last meeting, I'll say now, there's a book written called Friday Night Lights, not Friday afternoon. There's a movie and a TV show called Friday Night Lights, not Friday afternoon. The guys that we could get here today, I've talked to most of their parents just so they would approve them coming here. Most of them are at work. And we start some of our games at 2:30 in the afternoon. They cannot get there. They live in City Heights. You guys already know the financial structure of that place right now. Most of them are single, you know, single parents. I've had to pull mine in my own pocket just to feed some of these kids. I do whatever I can to feed them, clothe them, do whatever I can for them. All we're asking for is lights so they can play on Friday nights and try to get their families to come and actually be able to support them and watch them play. Give them the opportunity to do that. Thanks. Friday Night Lights. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I live in the neighborhood. I live 200 feet from the field. I want you to know that I'm not against the students or Hoover High, but I do have concerns about the lights and how they are handled. I have a lot of concerns about how this whole process, which it feels like they're going to be jammed down our throats. If you do do the lights, I would like, I require that they have police presence there, that they have school police to monitor the traffic. We have had near accidents on our corner. We have people loitering after the games. We have excess trash and these are serious issues. The negative mitigated report seemed to make light of them. We've never seen 3D showing these 100-foot light poles of what they're going to look like in a neighborhood. These are all concerns that we have. Incidents have been made light of and I can say, as living there 14 years, I don't appreciate it. I'm not against the students. I'm not against them having games. I'm, I don't trust the school district and I don't trust the fact that they've said, oh, at first it might be six or seven games and it moved up to 15 and I have great fears that they are going to be, or you, I don't know who's responsible for it, will be renting out the field to other people because now they have nightlights, they can do whatever they want. And I have great concerns about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Harrigan and unlike some of the speakers, I do live in the neighborhood. I am very much against the lights. The impact on our neighborhood is going, it's going to destroy it. I know that you think that this is drama. It isn't. We are already fighting the crime in the area. And I'd like to read this to those who may not realize it. The district does not have a joint use agreement with the City of San Diego at Hoover High School. However, the athletic facilities would be subject to the Civic Center Act and Board of Education Polity C4000, which permit organizations, clubs, and associations formed for recreation, educational, political, economic, artistic, or moral purposes to use the school buildings and grounds. Such use is called civic center use. We could conceivably have something going on there every single night. And you may all think that that's, that's way beyond, but conceivably this could happen and our little neighborhood is going to be destroyed. Thank you for hearing me.
Dawn Anderson, Ron Anderson.
Okay. Yeah. Hi, I'm Dawn Anderson. I live at 4583 Highland Avenue and I hope you've had a
And I hope you've had a really, really good time reading all of the stuff that was presented to you in that CD that you received because it is all supporting data regarding all of the things that have happened around in our neighborhood. Regarding some of the issues for Appendix A to A, it says that there is no comments from the city regarding the MNT. Unfortunately, the city was not able to comment because they were dark during the time of response. And also, they already had their stance in one of the letters that's presented to you right there in two thousand nine. They said what they, what their stance was on this project. Also, one of your own members said that they would not, this was quote, "would not allow their child to be picked up in front of that school at night." So you tell me, what kind of message does that send to us and the school? The number of night games is unfortunately still open-ended. That needs to be cleared up. It says fifteen-plus now, just like Ms. Harrigan said, it's open-ended. We need trust. That's what we need, is to be able to trust what you say.
My name is Ron Anderson. I live at forty-five eighty-three Highland Avenue, just north of Hoover High. I had my three-minute speech ready, but I guess I'll do it off the cuff because there's no way I'm going to fit it in in three minutes. Okay? I'd like to respond, we are not against sports, not at all. It's only the night events. When the, when the school put that brand-new field in there in the early two thousand, I think it's two thousand one, two thousand two, they started renting the field out. We didn't have problems until they started doing that. That's only a taste of what it's going to be. You put the lights in and just like one of the other speakers said, Susan Harrigan, we're going to, we potentially could have a night event every night of the week. Okay? Friday Night Lights, great in Texas where you've got two miles between the field and the, and the homes. Here, you've got the visitor, visitor bleachers thirty-five feet from the home behind it. Come on. Look at the pictures I provided to you. Okay? Look at the neighborhood. They, they say that the lights were sent to Patrick Henry. Patrick Henry would like to argue with that. They, they say there weren't. Seventy-two is when the lights went down and that's when they changed the orientation of the field. Took it out from the center of the campus to the external part of the campus where over thirty-five homes were ripped out to make way for those expansions. The neighborhood has already given enough.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ron Lardisabel. I am the athletic director at Hoover High School and my address is on file. One of our big, big points at the school through our WASC accreditation was to get parents back involved, to find ways to get our parents back involved with the school. In the last five years, we've had three night football games. In those games, we have, just this past October, we sold nine-hundred-and-one adult tickets to the game. Back in October of oh-eight, we had a night football game against Mission Bay. We sold four-hundred-and-nineteen adult tickets. In November of oh-six, we had a night football game against Sarah in which we sold one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifteen adult tickets. In comparison, whenever we start games at two-thirty in the afternoon, we have sold, in November of two thousand eight against Sarah High School, we sold a hundred-and-sixteen adult tickets. In October of oh-eight, in a three o'clock start against La Jolla, we sold eighty-two adult tickets. One of these, what I was trying to show, demonstrate is that, you know, our parents can come out and support the school. And it's one of our big WASC initiatives to get our parents back involved and this is one of the ways that we're trying to do it. Thank you.
Okay. We've got a, we've got a motion in a second. I think Mr. Barnett had requested to speak first.
This issue of fields, expansions, lights, I think we're all, pretty much all of us are going to be facing this in the coming months, years or so. I know it's, there's UC High, there's Point Loma High, and others that are looking at this. And I, I look at it first from pulling back a little bit at the broader policy issues. Let me digress for one minute. In nineteen ninety-eight, this school district, voters approved Proposition MM, which is one-half billion-dollar school bond at that time. There were thirteen new schools supposed to be built, including thirteen new libraries, and then eighty million dollars to be used for libraries in the district. The Oversight Committee at that time, of which I was chair of unanimously recommended to the school board, which none of you, and I wasn't on obviously, that we look at joint use for the libraries because they're community uses. The school board overturned that and said, no, we don't want to do that. Fast forward, two thousand and eight, we had Proposition S, two-point-one billion dollars. And this school board before us, the current board, are strong supporters of community-based schooling. Well, what does that mean? It means the school sites being part of the community. It means not locking the gates at four o'clock and not, and saying that need to maximize the community use. Now, obviously, there are impacts. I spent a couple hours with Point Loma neighbors the other day talking about concerns with trash, with parking, with crime, with noise pollution, all those legitimate concerns. And we need to be good neighbors. On the other hand, if we're going to spend six-hundred-thousand dollars to put lights in, to say that you only restrict them to fifteen days is a waste of bloody money. My belief is, if we're going to put lights in, and I think, my personal view is we should, you should not restrict it to fifteen days. If we are, if we are going to restrict it to fifteen days, then let's just keep renting portable lights. It's not, it's going to, and it will ultimately save money. My view is we should maximize the field, not just for the school, in the high school, but we have lots of athletic uses in the community. I mean soccer, softball, baseball, lacrosse. And so what I'm requesting tonight is we not approve the negative deck, but we as a board decide what role does Prop S money have in leveraging community-based schooling? And we should look at the policy of lights and not just, and then, so not make a decision on this particular item tonight, but decide, are we going to leverage those dollars or if not, then that's a policy of the board? Because this same issue is going to come up at every school site. And once again, we're responsible, we're the school board. We're not the city council. We're responsible to the kids in the district and the regionally. So I would request that we not take action tonight, that we look at broader use of Prop S revenues on all sites and say, are we maximizing them to meet the community-based schooling goals? And that includes fields, includes lights, includes community rooms, includes all, health clinics, whatever we're doing. So that's my, my reason for not wanting to support this tonight.
Ms. Jackson.
Well, I think we should support it tonight. I think we need to approve this. And I've heard and listened to both sides in quite detail. The removal of lights and certainly, I think, looking at our history is very important in our decisions, how you make them are very important because the long-term consequences can be devastating to a community. In several communities where people felt it was not appropriate to have night lights, they removed them, including Hoover, Morrison, and our community and in the southern part of the district. They had, like Hoover, their first night game, it was like in almost twenty years when I came on the board. Twenty years. The stands were packed because the people, the parents and the community want to see the students engaged. The concern, like I heard mentioned earlier, was that, oh my God, I know that the school, in that particular instance, the school coming to play, Morrison, didn't want to come. They almost refused to come to the community. The superintendent had to bring them down personally to get them to come to the community because it was, oh my God, people are going to get hurt, there's going to be, you know, crime. But what has happened is that none of that stuff happened. Nobody was injured. People came out. People enjoyed the game. Yes, there was extra security because of people concerned, but as we had more games, guess what? We had less security. In addition to that, the kids that were on the streets, not doing anything, hanging out in front of stores, just being children, were now involved in sports because more people started having more sports activities because we opened the field up. And this is what we need in many of our communities where there are a lot of students there, especially in our underserved communities. I do believe that we need to make sure that those lights are monitored and turned off as quickly as the crowd disperse. I know even from the Lincoln community, we have bright lights. And I get calls and saying, hey, it's midnight and the lights are still on. And who's supposed to turn them off and make sure they turn off and that kind of thing? So I do need to make, I do encourage us to make sure that we are good neighbors as well. But I think it's time. I think it's time that we started letting our students and families enjoy the sports that other communities have. I know in other areas it's going to come up. And I think in each area, we have to really look at what, what is going on in a particular area. But I do support students being able to play games at night in front of their parents and then for the people to be able to come together in the community to connect. And sports is a great way to do it. So I think we should approve this tonight. There's been a lot of work on this. This is not the first time we've heard this. We've had lots of community meetings. We've had invitations with, meetings with the board members from both sides. And I think that we need to put it to rest, at least in this particular school, and address each school as they come forward. So I'm going to vote yes for this tonight. And I think Councilmember Gloria, by the way, would be very supportive as Councilmember Young. The comment was that this belongs to the school district, but what happens is most of us in many areas, the board member and the council member work together when events occur to make sure that there is safety around the area. So thank you very much.
Well, I think probably, and I know everybody hasn't spoken, but I'm pretty sure the majority of the board supports Lincoln having, excuse me, Hoover, after listening to Ms. Jackson, approves having these lights for, for Friday night games. But I do have a question about this limitation in terms of the, and I realize there was a lot of going on in the community and in the meetings and so forth as far as compromises that were made. I know there was a lot that was done in terms of the lights and the placing of the lights. And I read through all the materials about, you know, what was being done and at what time they would be dimmed, at what time they'd be completely off, the way things were positioned in terms of noise. I think there was a lot of mitigation done. But then there is the issue that Mr. Barnett is bringing up about joint use of facilities that is so important in a budget-strapped time, whether we're talking about football fields, libraries, community meeting rooms. These are paid for by the taxpayers and they belong to all of us. And I really want to see us maximizing, not minimizing the use of these facilities. We're talking about, you know, Friday night football games, but there's also girls' soccer and lacrosse and a bunch of different sports that could participate. We're talking about bringing a community together and I think everything needs to be done in terms of mitigating. But I'm concerned if we are bound by some sort of limit on not having other legitimate community groups use these facilities. So I'd like to know what's the, what's the exact clarification or legal status, if maybe Mr. Marky could address what you came to on that.
Good evening and thank you. I'd just like to mention that this project's been underway since July two thousand eight and there's been a number of community engagements as well as just the basic legal work that we've done. The language that we have now says about fifteen events. And I think if Chuck would help me, it's about eight football games on a normal season. Is that correct? And then we may have a couple of playoff games and there may be some other special events, but we've put the language in there that doesn't tie the district's hand to exactly fifteen, but about fifteen. And this is a reasonable man approach. I would not, I would not think that the district would exceed that by much. And this is a legitimate community concern, but that's what the language says right now.
Okay. And then I assume that, as I mentioned, of the sports and so forth, there'd be, still would be the opportunity for a lot of daytime
Oh, absolutely.
And weekend use by the other
Well, you know, the community has a parking problem and, and as they all do, you know, certainly at Point Loma, we can't make any more parking. It's a, it's a community site. I think we've added about, in the vicinity of about sixty spots on that campus since we did the work. What we did here is we changed the path of travel for people entering the school. We redesigned the concession stand to put it in a better place based on community involvement. The lighting is directional with side visors. We've got a hundred-foot poles, which seems like a lot, but the purpose of that is to get a focus lens and get the, and get the lighting down in a, in a very small pattern. We've an ability to adjust the volume and the direction of the sound system. We've made some agreements on when we turn that off. Our plan is to start dimming the lights about nine o'clock and have them completely off by ten.
So there is no specific provision about prohibiting rentals of the facility to community groups?
No, the, they've had some issues out there in the past, and Chuck can speak to these better than I can, about soccer. And, and you know, there's, there's a tremendous shortage of athletic fields in the city, period. And so we have the normal tension about using these things and maximizing revenues and maximizing use with disturbing the right to a peaceful existence in the neighborhood. So I think we've got to be sensitive to all these things. And I think that Chuck and his team, under the superintendent's guidance, has done a fantastic job trying to mitigate these things. I would also think, from my professional opinion, the board does have some work to do on what the policy is throughout the district. In this particular case, it's, it's absolutely a different school than the other ones. You know, we're doing the same thing out at University City High School in Claremont and Morris. In this particular case, to me, it's one of equity. We've got parents that are day workers, they're hourly workers, they take off time. It's going to cost them money so they can't go to the games. So in the evening, they can, they can make it and the numbers speak for themselves. I, I recollect from our police department that during the most recent evening game they had, they had very little problems. We've got a couple of thousand people around. There is, there are people that are going to do, they're not going to do the right things, but we mitigated that extraordinarily well through the homecoming. We have to put a great deal of effort into that and we can't become complacent. But from my professional opinion, this is, this is money well-spent. It's, it's authorized in the bond language. It's a legal and appropriate expense as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
All right. Well, in response to that question, I do, I do support, based on the work that's gone in, the community involvement and so forth in terms of moving forward with this proposal, I would just like, and this is my own personal opinion as opposed to the board, that on, on future projects, and every community is different, every situation is different, that we really look at, as we're proving it well ahead of time, I know it has come up in community meetings, but just maximum, maximizing joint use and community participation as opposed to minimizing.
You know, these projects are going to come forward to the board. I can just take it as an aside. We've gotten more interest from community groups recently in the last six months for these kind of joint use agreements, volunteer projects, than we have in the last twenty-four months. So I think the community's actually energized and they realize that the public school systems need that third leg. They need charitable contributions, partnerships from all kinds of people, industry, nonprofits, all kinds of folks. And we've got to open our, I think we have to look at this in a broader context. We've had these discussions on, before on endowments and all kinds of things. But, you know, I think we're headed in that direction. Thank you.
If I could add for just a moment here, supplementing what Mr. Marky just said, we have to strike the right balance between being good neighbor and providing an enriched academic and extracurricular experience for our kids. And we look at each of these on a case-by-case campus basis, but want to be sensitive to those two things, good neighbor and an enriched experience for our kids. We've worked through issues at some of the schools. We continue to work with through them. I talk to principals about good citizenship across the board at our schools. We try to maximize and continue to strive for collaboration. There are over seventy joint-use fields in our district today where we are partnering with the city in one shape or another. And we've gone off and done the same thing with libraries. We look at other possibilities for how we can partner. But we have to bring balance where everyone is enriched in some way and everyone is respected in some way. So I clearly support going forward with this, but wanted you to be assured that we try to look at that good neighbor and the enriched experience.
This is very important that we really look at
This is very important, that we really look at the concerns of members of the community that support it, and members of the community that have raised a few very valid statements this evening. First of all, I totally understand the concern with crime and the need for increased police presence. Also, the concerns of trash and parking in the community, because that does have an effect on the neighborhood. For those of you that have been walking through Talmage, and I've gone and visited with a lot of the people in the community that live right across the street from Hoover High School, and some of them are in support, but a lot of them are very concerned, to the extent that we can be a good neighbor and make sure that we can be trusted, to do the right thing, to ensure the safety of the neighborhood, to clean up after ourselves. And so then the question is, are we going to be out there Saturday morning picking up all the trash that happens to find its way into neighbors' front yards after a football game? I would hope so. I would hope that the football team maybe might want to take that on as a, as a member, a way to give back to the community. Also, the question about limiting the number of evenings is very, very delicate and very important, because in some schools where they do have the lights on every single night because they're renting it out to one group or another, a lot of those high schools have a little bit of a buffer zone. Where at Hoover High School, there isn't a buffer zone because the re, the field is built right across the street from houses. So we have to be a good neighbor again and come to some agreement that we do need to limit it, so that we can have Friday night lights for football, a few games for soccer, but we have to be reasonable in our expectations. We can't say, well, we want lights every night because, boy, we can make some money. Because I don't think that that's being a good neighbor and reaching a compromise about what might be best for the neighborhood. To that extent, I'd like to make, also point out some very good concerns that lead me to think that we really ought to get behind it. First of all, it's not fair that in 1978, the lights were taken away and never put back. And that, that is echoed by some people that live right across the street also. Second, it's really an opportunity for community members to get together at those events, especially families. It is an equity issue. I think that if you take a look at the school district, we need to make sure that all of our facilities provide the same kinds of high-level services to all of our students. And that is really a great opportunity to change the culture of a school, so that a school in the low 600, you know, can really try to develop, get some identity and improve academically, not just athletically. And that when you take a look at the requirement of realizing that because there is no buffer zone, we owe it to the community and the neighborhood to have that kind of a compromise and mitigate the overuse of the lights. And I would propose that the, the limit of 15 events a year not become, I would propose an amendment to the proposal that it is not about 15, that it is a maximum of 15. And I think that is, that we owe that as an obligation, as a board and a school district, to show and extend a hand of trust to the community. If we say 15 events is the maximum per year, then let's mean it and put our actions and our policy behind it. So to that extent, I think that if we're able to reach some compromise, then I can support this measure. If we don't compromise with the community and we don't establish trust with the community, then I cannot support it.
Okay, so we've got a motion to amend the motion to have a maximum of 15 events per year. There are second to that motion.
Yes.
Okay, we've got a second. Let me ask a question. So Mr. Barnett raised, I think, a kind of a nuts and bolts question, which is, if we're only going to have 15, whether it's about 15 or a maximum of 15, why install lights? Why not simply, is it, is it better cost-benefit-wise to install lights rather than simply rent lights for 15 events per year? So that would be my question to Superintendent or to Mr. Markey.
Coming up, I think, I appreciate the fact that there's been a lot of community input, a lot of issues. But you know, the one issue that hasn't been discussed since this has been is cost, best use of our bond dollars or tax dollars, cost effectiveness. That issue hasn't been discussed, and it hasn't been discussed for decades at this district, which is one of the reasons why we're in such a financial mess that we're in. Every dollar we spend on this is a dollar we can't use on air conditioning, or fields, or classrooms, or library upgrades, or roofs, or all that. So we need to have that at least part of the discussion when we have these discussions, and not just say it as an afterthought. And that's really what I was trying to get at, is it should be part of our discussion. And then if community concerns take priority, then that's fine, but to not even have it as part of the discussion is, I think, irresponsible.
I don't have the, I don't have the exact dollar. Maybe the athletic director does, but if I recollect, it's about $2,000 in that range. It's not an exorbitant amount of money to rent lights.
$2,000 per event to rent lights.
Right. I think it's in that range. Please, you know...
It'd be $30,000 a year.
If it's at about two grand. And I think it's about that range. I've never rented it myself, so I know, and this goes way back, we had an event where we had to pay for that. And I think it's about in that range. It's not a lot of money compared to the cost of lights. These are $250,000. We used to spend a lot of money.
That's what I was told at Mission Bay, that they spend about $2,000 to $3,000 per game on the lights.
And who pays for it?
And that's the general fund dollars.
Those are general fund...
Or booster club dollars, right.
Right. And some communities do not have booster clubs that have that kind of money.
Yes, ma'am.
And so therefore, that means, guess what? They can't do it. That, I mean, so, so I think that, what I hear Mr. Barnett is saying, and if we want to have a board workshop to discuss how we move Prop S from here forward, that's okay. But I think that right now, given this situation, we've spent years looking at this, and if the fact is going to be that if we have to rent lights for people, I mean, if we're not paying for it, they have to pay for it, then that puts them at a huge disadvantage. And what happens in this district is that people who cannot afford things get left out, and then when they finally get to the table, when we finally say we're going to take care of them, here comes another wrinkle. It says, we're not going to do it now. Let's wait, or you find money to pay for it.
Are you indicating that that's what I'm saying?
What I'm saying is that we need to go ahead and approve this and move on, and if your issue is that we need to reassess how we're going to spend Prop S funds in the future, then do it. But this community has been waiting over two years on this.
I support lights on this campus. I support lights at Point Loma. I support it at UC. I support it at, I think, Crawford. And what I'm saying is, this proposal is limiting the use of this community. In fact, you're, it's being limited so that only 15 days a year, when there are less opportunities in this community for other athletic opportunities, there's less field space in the neighborhood for sports, for soccer, for lacrosse, for all the other sports. So in fact, you're locking in a permanent restriction on this community, which has larger athletic needs than other communities. So I want to make clear, I support the lights. I don't support an arbitrary number without looking at the cost-benefit analysis. So I don't want it to be indicated that my, wanting to discuss the policy is trying to delay a community that deserves it. A lot of communities, Mission Bay is another one. Point Loma had lights ever taken out. I agree. But I want to make clear, I don't think my view should be twisted to indicate that I am opposed to certain, certain kids in certain communities deserve less than other kids, because that is not my view.
I call for the question.
I know the superintendent had a comment.
Yes, if I could. Prop S, voted for by well over 60% of the electorate, agreed with the priority set forth, which included upgrades to athletic facilities across the district. And that ranged from fields to lighting to ADA. And we took that aboard, and what Mr. Markey and the Prop S team have been doing is developing and implementing the projects. So those have been underway, and I know the board needs to consider that as they reflect on this. Secondly, the 15 games or evening events is not a district policy, widespread. I just want you to be aware of that, that we certainly, and I'll go back to that good neighbor consideration. Each of our high schools, whether they have lights or not, has its policies about the number of games and how they're scheduled. They do that in conjunction with the CIF or whatever the particular sport is. Now, those schools with lights do make their own particular considerations, but there is no widespread 15 restriction factor. So I just want you, the board, to be aware of that. It's clear that if the board wants staff to take a look at policies in a broader way and how they impact neighborhoods and utilization, we can certainly do that. The Civic Center Act that was referenced earlier is something that we control. I mean, we have to comply with that legislation. The principal is, and the principal staff is where that policy is implemented, in conjunction with our real estate office and with the district as a whole. I don't know of any overuse of that in the recent past, but we're very sensitive to who is allowed to use our facilities, under what conditions, the costs associated with that. So I just want to assure the board that we try to manage these on a campus-by-campus basis. And what we're doing here is a reflection of the voters and trying to bring that equity issue in a reasonable way.
Okay, so we've got a mo, an amendment. Let's vote on the amendment first. And the amendment that has a second is to limit the number of events, evening events, to 15 per year.
And just, and just to be clear parliamentarily, that after we vote on the amendment, we will still, we'll go back to the original motion or the amended motion?
That's right. So please vote on...
We could, the board...
So please first vote on the amendment to the motion.
To limit it to 15.
To limit it to 15 per year. Okay, so now let's go to the original motion, which is to approve the mitigated negative declaration. We've got a motion, a second. Please vote. Okay. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for speaking on this issue. Okay.
Tell us how much the bricks cost.
Five-minute break, but please try to limit it to five minutes if you can.
I'm going to go get something to eat. Whoops.
A music venue teamed up with a charitable food organization today to make sure hundreds of local families had a wonderful turkey dinner. KUSI's Ed Linderman has the story.
The House of Blues is one of San Diego's top entertainment venues, and today, the featured performers didn't disappoint. But on Thanksgiving, the music is simply an accompaniment to this, turkey and all the fixins. And notice the dinner guests, families, hundreds of them. The House of Blues has been doing this for six years. This is the second year it's teamed up with a charitable food organization, Feeding America, San Diego, and San Diego City Schools. The school district identified the families in need, including this one. Say hello to the eight members of the McDonald family.
Family's everything. That's what life is about, is family.
Dad Robert, Mom Antonia, their five children, and one granddaughter. This is a family that has a lot to be thankful for. You see, in the mid-'90s, Robert and Antonia met on the street. Both were homeless. Robert had a drug problem. Antonia had just crossed into this country illegally. Today, Robert has a good job, and Antonia has just gotten legal status. The couple's children certainly appreciate the hardships their parents have gone through.
They've, they've seen it. They've seen the growth from being able to come from the streets into where we're at now. And, you know, especially with my wife being a new immigrant, you know, they've seen that growth, where she wasn't supposed to be here illegally. Now she's here legally, and it doesn't get any better than that.
As Feeding America's Tim Nye told me, it's about taking care of each other.
That we look to our neighbor, to our family, and that we all come together. And this is a wonderful event for me. Like, where else would I want to be than here with these folks, coming together and serving the community like this?
Oh, by the way, dinner isn't over yet. A surprise for every family. As everybody was leaving, they were directed to a truck filled with turkeys, thanks to the Rose Foundation. For the McDonald's and hundreds of other families, Thanksgiving's going to last a while longer. In downtown, Ed Linderman, KUSI News.
A local kindergarten teacher won big today. Patty Steele, a teacher at Paradise Hills Elementary School, was one of 10 winners of the Horace Mann Companies Win-Win Sweepstakes. The sweepstakes was for educators across the country. Half of the total award amount was given to the prize winner. The other half was donated to a nonprofit education-related organization. Still received $1,000, and the other $1,000 went to the school.
We're trying to get up to date with everything. They have a great computer lab, and we're trying to get some more things in the classroom so we can be up to snuff with the rest of the world.
Steel and Paradise Hills Elementary received their award in a special assembly at the school this morning. San Diego High School now has a new culinary arts facility. A dedication and ribbon-cutting ceremony was held today for that building. It was built in part with funds from the voter-approved Proposition S. The new kitchen provides an upgraded space for students to prepare for a career in culinary arts.
We're able to teach all aspects of the industry with this kitchen. We're able to teach everything from cost analysis to the actual production on professional equipment. This kitchen's nicer than lots of kitchens in San Diego, and lots of restaurants would be jealous of this kitchen. So we're really excited about it.
San Diego High School was divided into six thematic schools in 2004, thanks to funding from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Each school provides students with a smaller learning environment that focuses on enhancing student engagement.
Well, they've been open for several months, but today, a formal dedication for the three new state-of-the-art facilities at San Diego High School. The three complexes cost more than $5.5 million, and were funded by the passage of Proposition S two years ago. They provide space for the college, career, and technical education programs at San Diego High School.
What we are doing by opening up these facilities is bringing a dream come true, to bring reality to our kids, to bring something that they will take away from San Diego High School back into the community, back into the region.
900 students are served by the three programs, which teach culinary arts, management, finance, and business, and of course, broadcast and multimedia productions.
A ribbon-cutting ceremony was held today at San Diego High School dedicating the brand-new, state-of-the-art culinary arts facility. The professional kitchen is designed to teach all aspects of the industry, from cost analysis to food production. The new kitchen is paid for with money from Proposition S, which gave $5.6 million to the school to upgrade the old facilities.
We had a kitchen here before. It had some electric ranges that were definitely outdated, a lot of equipment that was put together over the years, some outdated equipment. We made do with it. We did some catering events with it, but this is just hands-down better, and we're able to do a lot more with it.
There is also a new finance and business program on campus, as well as a high-definition multimedia production center. Well, they call him Wapo, good-looking, and he remembers each and every one of their names, students past and present.
This is an information item, a discussion item. We've got one public speaker on this item, who is David Page. David, are you here? Yep. David, please come on, come forward.
My name is David Page. My address is certainly on record. I'm the District Advisory Council Chair for Competitorial Education. Procedurally, I have a question. Typically, I would come and speak to an item that has some discussion. The information that's available for this particular item is not really clear to me as to what it is you're doing with this agenda item. If this is just about reiterating what was spoken at the last meeting, then I'm not certain that I'd have much to say except to restate my concerns, which would be that, again, this issue has a predetermined outcome that in five years, 32,000... this issue has a predetermined outcome, that in five years, 32,000 students will lose their Title I program money, whether those programs were working or not. And as the discussion of elected representatives exclates, I'm at a loss to understand the circumstances under which a board member in Area A, B, or C would find it best for the students busting into their areas or attending their schools, that they would do better without the programs that are provided by Title I. It's one thing to research the possibility of any programs that are paid for by Title I, but to accept the notion first that they're going to go away, and then ask for data, doesn't make sense to me. So the statement in this item doesn't make sense that we're going to eliminate it up to 75%, but we want to talk about the programs. Those are two different conversations, and my issues are with the idea that we would predetermine that in five years, we're eliminating all the way back to 75%, while this board has approved 10% and raised. In five years, you're going to have a 50% increase in employee benefits. You don't even see that far into the future financially, to know what this is going to do to a school. So you're avoiding the finance discussion of it to talk about programs, but you're talking about programs that are going to disappear for these students up to the 75% tile as a predetermination. The only thing that is predetermined, that the Areas A, B, and C will lose, the program improvement schools out of their districts, the property values will go up for those three board members, and the other board members will receive a lot more money. And that's the only thing that data shows, or that could be said about this idea, other than these board members are voting to lose the money for their students. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barnett, do you want to speak to this item?
I know I shouldn't have come back here.
Yeah.
At the December 14th board meeting, which unfortunately, I didn't have the flu at, but I will the next time. The board approved, just to reiterate for the huge public that's still thronging the room here, and my mother and three other people watching on TV still, the board decided for next year, the staff needed direction, started putting the budget together, that essentially, next year's fiscal year 11-12 Title I distribution would be essentially the same as it is currently. The board also voted, the majority of the board, to say that we would look at developing a five-year phasing in the subsequent five years, based on a minimum funding threshold of 75%. As part of that action, which didn't get a lot of discussion subsequently, and I wanted to clarify that we're all on the same page now, that we said we would actually, also for the first time, look at a monitoring process in more detail and a measuring process, and also making sure there's input from, on this phasing process, from the various stakeholders or anyone who's interested, including the District Area Committee, the clusters, principals, bargaining groups, PTA, and other interested parties. How this would be phased in, the percentages, et cetera, per year, I mean, ultimately, that's going to be part of that discussion. In addition, it was agreed that we would really try to analyze, in the past, how these funds have been used to reduce the achievement gap, because ultimately, that's what we're talking about here. And this analysis would include reviewing past Title I allocations and analyze how they impacted students at the sites on reducing the achievement gap, if they did, and also reviewing past and proposed spending of my major Title I categories, including upfront set-asides, or what are called reservations. Well, I copied, if you see here, the numbers from the proposed 2011, 2012. This was from a memo that we received December 10th, when we all were asking questions on Title I, and I basically, Cheryl, copied and pasted it for me. And essentially, everything from where it says "required reservation" down to the asterisk is from the staff report. It's not numbers that I've created or proposing. This is based on both the federal numbers. So it's important to understand that the total anticipated is $43 million, roughly. And of this, in fiscal 2011 and '12, of that, only $21.8 million is to be impacted by the 75% threshold, five-year phasing, but that won't even start till the following fiscal year. And then, there are all these other categories, which I believe we need to have a lot of discussion of. There's required reservations, which, before we do anything, set aside $12 million. And we need to understand what the $8.6 million for supplemental education services and transportation, what we're legally required to do, and what we're spending that for. The professional development, $2.4 million, et cetera. And then, the district overhead. And obviously, there takes money and time to administer programs, but we need to make sure we understand that the 6.5, if I'm following the line item right, $6.5 million administration, what is that being used for? With the goal of, if we could augment the $21 million site amount...
Right.
And also, it's important to understand that, and correct me, staff, if I'm wrong, but when we looked at the allocations to the sites last time, for instance, the $2.4 million was not included in that. That was in addition to that, if I'm not misspeaking. So, once again, we have an opportunity to look at... So what I'm just requesting is that we basically reiterate what we said we were going to do, with this being the outline. It doesn't have to be kept at this, and look at these issues, and over the next six months or so.
Yeah.
And then, and so that's, I don't know that we need, I guess I can make a motion and say, I recommend, I move that the board reiterates intent to conduct the above outreach and proposed analysis of these items as mentioned above, with the target completion date of June 30.
I mean, I, yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson. I was, I support everything that Mr., the clarification of the direction I think we are giving to the staff, everything that Mr. Barnett just talked about. Again, I don't know whether we need a motion to clarify that or not, but...
Well, there isn't a second, so I guess we don't have to...
Oh, no, hold on. I just, Ms. Ward.
The only thing I was going to say to the item was submitted as an information.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I certainly support the clarification. Yeah, Mr. Co...
President, if I can thank the trustee Barnett and the board.
Sir, super technical. Can we just ask Ms. Jackson?
Sure. I was going to say that this is in line with where we wanted to go.
Okay.
Yes, but a couple of questions that I wanted to ask, which I think is, we're trying to get to as well, is that after the required reserves, there's about $31 million. So less than half of the money that is coming for the students are actually being sent out to the students. And is there, when you look at what's included in administration, it includes some things, charter schools, Title I funds go straight to them. Some of the other things, the private schools are already up top. So the administration piece, you know, could that be slimmed down to the point? It, you know, it said that only half of the money that comes in is sent out, you know, less than half is actually sent out to the students. And I guess the goal would be to get, even though I know that the central office says that, well, you have support for corrective action and restructuring, that eventually goes to schools too. But I think that in the, in helping schools in this economic climate, it's best for us to send as much money out to the school sites as possible, in the allocated formula, versus holding some back in for how people might want to do certain programs and that type of thing. So I think that is my only concern with looking at these numbers. I know this is information, and I think, I'm glad they brought it back up, but I think that, from my view of this, again, we need to send as much money out to the school sites as possible, as much. And after those that are actually required at the top, those other reservations, I think we need to look at those and say, well, we actually need those, and if not, we need to send them back, we need to send that money out to the school sites as well.
Okay, Dr. Evans?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Barnett, for doing this, because I think it's always good when we're having discussions to have, you know, have things very, very clear. And just so I understand what you were saying, at this point, you're talking about, you know, we, the board approved the 75% threshold, based on this particular amount of allocation, when you're talking about the $21.8 million. And some of the flexibility there is that if we're able to find other funds and get them to the schools, that we might, then we would discuss how to allocate that money. Is that correct?
The board voted what it voted last time. Once we go through this process, and, you know, the, my, we can, we, I mean, whatever majority of the board wants to do in the future, you know, the majority of the board's going to do. I mean, my feeling is, once we go through this process, we're going to become a lot more educated and knowledgeable about the funds, where they've been used, have been used. And I have a feeling we, you know, we'll have a different discussion in how we phase this in, in six months, with certain restrictions, if possible, or certain targeting. I don't know the answer, obviously. I just feel like we need to become educated, and all our goals are to maximize the use of any dollars we get to the student directly. We can then argue or debate over how much goes to which students in which area as the larger issue, if we need to, again, but for now, the issue is all these subgroups and dollars. And, you know, I think we're going to learn a lot, and we'll hopefully get a lot of good input, and it will be interesting to hear the different sites that have spent money in the past. I'd like them to come forward and demonstrate how the dollars they've spent have actually worked to improve, reduce the achievement gap, and show us what works and what doesn't work and hasn't worked.
Right, and I agree with that, and in fact, that's one of the reasons I have stayed at that point, because I do want to have a real clear look at what is the value of what's being done, not just who is entitled to what or who gets what, but what is really the impact that's being done with the money. At this school with $650,000, what are they accomplishing? At this school with $67,000, what are they accomplishing? I think one of the things about the board taking action, though, is that, you have listed here, the groups that are going to be consulted. I do know that, in the past, there were indications from the District Advisory Council that did not take a position on particular percentages. And so, there's been some board action, and there certainly will be some reaction to that, and there is more than ample time for all of these different groups to comment on it and to have their input on what's going on, so I appreciate the clarification.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now, Item H3, we also have some speakers, so I'd like to get to this, and I'll introduce this, so...
Do we do it to allow it go?
No, we didn't. We'll get back to H2 in a second, yeah, yeah.
All right.
We want to let the speakers go home. Okay, so this is a resolution in support of a collaborative program with the San Diego Education Association, the Equality Alliance, and other stakeholder groups. And let me, I guess, clarify what my intention here is. We had a great discussion this morning about the progress to date on the development of clusters. And as I had mentioned this morning, I think that discussion ranged from the structure of governance and decision-making with clusters, to the question of how the area superintendents are managing their responsibilities within the clusters. But I think that there is a critical element to not just the development of our clusters, but our overall idea of community-based school reform, which relies on partners working with the school district, not under the direction of the school district, but choosing on their own accord to come to the table and work with us, to define the elements of what a successful school looks like, and to hold our schools accountable, to making sure that everything from engaged parents, to the schools serving as centers of community, to schools being a great place for people to work, to collaborative work going on between the principal and teachers and classified staff and parents, that I think for community-based school reform to work, we have to have all the stakeholders come together and be in an ongoing basis, working together to see, how's our school doing in terms of the elements that we think are necessary for students to achieve, and how can we do things better, what's working now, and how do we focus on moving forward and improving in each of those different elements? That requires partnership, and we've begun a conversation with a few organizations, but certainly, my intention in this resolution is to make clear that our goal is to reach out to every organization, whether it's, you know, individual, that's critical to an individual school, or critical to all the schools in the district, to work together in partnership. And so, what this resolution is doing is acknowledging that, to date, the San Diego Education Association has stepped up in a very serious way, and in a way that I think defies what we've seen in this district for certainly, you know, probably a good decade and longer, where the idea of the district and the teachers' union working collaboratively certainly has not been what we've seen, and is, in fact, not the way that maybe that the district or SDEA has defined their purpose. In fact, I think what we've seen is SDEA and other organizations, in some ways, defining their purpose as working adversarially with each other. And I think we've seen that play out, you know, for a long time in this district. And so now, what we're asking our organizations to really take some risk, maybe a leap of faith, to come together on their own accord and work with the district to move things forward in a positive way. So my resolution is an acknowledgement of the commitment, to date, of a couple of organizations to work with the district, and it's a statement of the district's commitment to work as good partners with these organizations. Yeah, Mr. Viser?
I think this is a real step forward towards working together with all the different stakeholders, parents, teachers, and other folks in the community, to improve student learning with a real focus on academics and support and community involvement. And this specific resolution is focusing on the San Diego Education Association. However, we also have a lot of other partners and folks in the classroom, like the paraeducators and the classified employees that are a part of that community. And to that extent, I would like to propose an amendment to include CSEA as well, specifically in Line 6, in the third whereas, and also in the "be it further resolved" paragraph, having met with the leadership of CSEA over the weekend, they're on board and being a part of finding solutions to improve student learning.
Okay, so we've got an, just procedurally...
A motion to amend.
A motion to amend. I made a motion that hasn't yet been seconded. Do we need a quick second and then go to...
I'll second your motion.
Okay, and now, Mr. Viser is...
Move to amend.
His way. And do we have a second to Mr. Viser's motion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay. Which is, I think one of the reasons that we only have listed here SDEA and the Equality Alliance is because those particular groups have formally agreed to be in this resolution, and the idea is to invite all types of groups to be involved, but I don't think we, to my knowledge, there hasn't been enough, even though they may have stated, there hasn't been an official buy-in or communication from CSEA to be a part of this.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, SDEA and Equality Alliance themselves, I know in SDEA's case, and they'll speak to it in a second, have a schedule to go to their board to adopt a similar resolution, but have asked for the district to adopt a resolution first, and Equality Alliance is in the process of working through their organizational commitment. So CSEA and the discussion that Mr. Viser and I had with them intend as well to go forward, you know, in this process, to take it to their boards, or, you know...
Okay, so it's basically an invitation to them to...
Yeah.
Okay, then that's not a problem.
Okay, we've got a few public speakers, so I'll call Bill Freeman, Pat Washington, David Page, and Andrea Guerrero, and I'm sorry, first, if I could call Jim Varnador, because he signed up to speak.
Mr. President, let him speak first.
Okay, sure thing.
Good evening, long evening. I'm Bill Freeman. I'm the president of SDEA. My address is on record. I'm really excited about this opportunity, and I know that as SDEA, we fought... And I know that as SDEA, we fought a long time, trying to get different things done. This is not really about SDEA. This is about the kids. As a teacher, I've worked with the communities. I've worked with the parents. This is about the kids. This is about the parents. This is about those individuals that are watching their kids and they don't know what to do about them. This is about the parents seeing their voice in the school that their kids are attending. This is about the statement that the lady made here about her school in 1952 that's not fenced up and it's not closed. This has nothing to do with clusters. You can put a community school in any cluster. This is about bringing the parents to the school site, making them feel comfortable. We have partnershiped with a community organization that's out in the community, that knows the parents, that knows the communities. The teachers are talking, and other educators are talking to each other. This is about collaboration. It's about us doing what we know works. It's about student achievement. It's about not waiting until some tie from Washington comes here and tells us what to do to increase our student achievement. We know what to do. We just need to work together to do the things that we know work. So, I hope that you support this resolution. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Andrea Guerrero, and I'm the executive director of the Equality Alliance. And we have, for the past few years, been engaging with the district and with teachers on student achievement issues, specifically on getting A- through G policies passed and implemented. We began our relationship somewhat adversarially with all involved, and a lot has changed in this district, and we've come a long way. And that's been through dialogue and collaboration. We've had a very positive experience working with the district, with teachers, and bringing parents into a conversation about A- through G implementation. And I really, I credit Dr. Salazar for facilitating that. But I wanted to let you know that we see this as, with the same opportunity, to make some significant advances in the interests of students. And our particular interest is in making sure that parents have a voice in all of this, that they are engaged, that there's some intentionality about them being a part of the process all the way through, and that there's accountability along the way. We want to make sure that whatever reforms are brought into play, that they are a part of what parents want and that the reforms are accountable to parents. So, that's our interest. We'll continue to be the watchdog that we are, but we think that this holds some promise. And we think it's critical that you all take the first step, because it is a leap of faith for all of us to step out of our comfort zone, put down our swords, so to speak, and play together.
My name is David Page, still. I'm just here as a parent, though, on this issue. First of all, I can't let that last item pass. I'm pulling my hair out. Title I law requires 85% of the money to be spent on students directly, and we do that. So, when you see those reservations you're talking about for Title I money, for program improvement, that program money goes right to your item.
Hold on a second, Mr. Page. You've got a point of order.
Okay.
I don't understand. Are you addressing the... Forgive me. Are you addressing the...
I'm making the shortest statement possible. The 85% of the money you saw last item goes to your students. And now, I'm moving forward.
All right, move forward.
This document indicates, to me, a lot more employee issues than education issues. Engaged, empowered, and accountable parents is good, but good working conditions and learning conditions, culture trusting teachers and administrators, teachers have independence and academic freedom, and adequate time to teach and collaborate, those are all the old-school teacher union issues. You know, we already have a process for this. This district has an agreement with the SDEA regarding governance and governance teams and collaboration. That's a bigger picture than what you're trying to do here at 10 schools. I'm not sure of the equity in the 10 schools that might be selected for this, how that's going to be done, how the school site council is going to be treated in this matter, if they happen to be federal schools, federally funded schools. But what I know is this, that the law regarding school site councils, is that that is made up of parents and teachers and a 50-50 mix with a principal already. We already have that. And that the site governance team already has a requirement for CSEA, SDEA, and parents on that, with a majority of teachers on that thing. So, I don't understand why we're having to do this. If only the SDA would support the governance teams in those school sites, properly train those two school sites, how to empower their teachers to be involved in decision-making at the school site. The SSC is required to collaborate with the governance team, with the foundations, with all the different parent groups at that site. And there's nothing that restricts them right now from having the exact thing that you're about to vote on through their governance teams and SSCs and have those same plans and activities taken. All I see here is a document that says SDEA, CTA, NEA, and a few union issues. Thank you.
Okay, let's do this. Pat Washington, my address is on file. I've already said good evening. I just want to make a couple of points. One is that I'm speaking as an educational advocate for southeast schools, for poor, underserved students and parents who are often uncomfortable being engaged in a lot of the decisions and discussions that are actually taking place right now about their kids. So, I'm excited about this initiative for a lot of different reasons. And I want to piggyback on something Ms. Clavie said. She said that the enthusiasm that you show as a board and getting the community and parents involved is encouraging, is exciting. And I think that's what I want to bring to the table as the last speaker on this subject. To me, this is about doing an even better job of finding ways to engage nonprofit organizations, to engage parents and community members in a way that's non-threatening. And let me give you an example. Last night's Lincoln Cluster meeting was exciting, because I've been to the Lincoln Cluster meetings where we didn't have that many parents. And what's happening there, because of the initiatives that are taking place in the district, is that more and more parents are coming to those meetings, more and more parents are bringing other parents. And then, what's happening, unfortunately, is some of them get there and we blow them away, you brought me away, with budget stuff, in a two-hour window that they're supposed to absorb and then go back and make intelligent decisions for the kids they love. To me, this is an opportunity to find other structures, other opportunities, other venues where we can actually do even more to educate parents about what's at stake. Because I really believe that when they are more informed, they're more engaged, they're more clear about what's going on, we will have parents demanding that voters vote for education. We will have parents demanding that our nonprofits, that our businesses, our churches are at the table doing what's best for kids all around. So, I'm excited about this. I think the clusters are energizing, but it's a different environment from the one that's being described here. So, please move forward. I thank you for even trying. I hope we're successful. I hope you're successful, since I'm not voting.
Jim Varnador?
Mr. President, members, I'm still Jim Varnador. I still live in City Heights, which is still America's finest community. And I've not come here, Mr. President, to rain on your parade. You don't give a speaker slip for those of us who would just like to offer good advice. We have to take a position. I flipped a quarter and opposed, got it. City Heights has been the site of innumerable pilot programs, including the one I write you about so frequently, the Price Initiative, which is an absolute collapsed failure. And so, my caution to you today is, before you undertake yet another pilot program in my community with my neighbors' children and grandchildren, would you be sure that you know what you're doing? Would you be cautious about it? Would you think the thing through to the bitter end and ask, is the outcome of this look like a success? Does the outcome of this look like a failure? I don't know the answer to that. It's your initiative, and you folks are the experts. But please, don't inflict another failed pilot program on my neighbors' children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Varnador. Okay, so we've got an amendment to include CSEA in a second. Can we, questions or speak to the amendment? Any board members?
I'll call the question.
Okay, so, this is on the amendment. Okay, please vote on the amendment.
There's no second amendment. Just a second.
Okay, the amendment passes 4-1, so now, please vote on the... Yes, I'm sorry. They have a conversation.
They have a conversation on the item, on the amendment. Well, he may want to go home, but it's just not that easy. Certainly, I support the efforts of SDEA and the Alliance to what they want to do. But I don't, I'm not understanding why we had to do a resolution for them to do something that others are coming forth doing already. This morning in our workshop, we heard from several area soup. Ms. Phelps talked about businesses in her area that was partnered with schools, churches that was partnering with schools. We heard from the same thing in the Lincoln Cluster. If an entity wants to go in and help a school, I think that's what it should do. I have a grave concern about pilot programs, and certainly, I've already shared this with Richard. We've been collaborative in City Heights for well over a decade. SDEA is part of that, okay? And so, I have some concerns about that. SDEA started their own charter school. We have forgotten about that. So, my, I think David was right in the fact that we have systems in place to already have our staff, our teachers, engage the community at their school sites. I think that would be the greatest benefit that SDEA could do, if they could energize all of their staff at all of the schools that they work at, and many of them do this already, but to energize them to another level where they are really reaching out to those parents. My concern with this is that we're going to try to pick 10 schools to pilot. And we spent time this morning, and I shared this with already, but we spent time talking about our cluster model. And now, we're going to start going into that cluster model, doing a horizontal thing as well. And I have concerns. I really think that if we are very serious about making sure that people are engaged in our schools, that we embrace them being engaged in our schools. We don't have to do a resolution for everyone, because as soon as we do this one, the next week, I need to bring the Alpha Kappa up here, the Quanis up here. I need to bring the church from Claremont up here, because they're all going into their clusters, finding schools, and they're getting engaged in those schools. I think once someone has taken the initiative to go to a school site, and there has been some results, and we have some data to show that they're working and helping, then we can do a resolution. Because what that says is, they put their money first. What I hear here is that we're saying, people are saying, if you don't do a resolution, then we may not be willing to help. We'll go to our boards and ask them after we get this passed by your board. And my thing is that, no. I think that right now, it's all hands on deck. And if the people that are listed here truly believe in education, they would find a school that they feel committed to, and they would adopt that school, and they would get energized in that school. To say that they want to help, but the superintendent has to help them find 10 schools to participate in, okay? What does this pilot look like? Does this mean that all of a sudden, these schools are not going to follow the everyday rules? Are we going to modify people's contracts? Are we gonna... I have no knowledge what this means to a school. And so, I don't think it's fair also to say to a school, we're going to put you in a pilot program. And City Heights, I know we're trying to deal with that issue, but those kids have been written about for years in magazines about the wonderful things that are happening in their classrooms, okay? But the truth of it is, the academics piece just isn't there. So, I'm with Mr. Varnador. I caution us to start into another pilot that involves our students. I think that if anyone, businesses, nonprofits, really want to help our schools, then they adopt the school. And that's what I say to people when they come to me and say, how can I help? I tell them, go to that school, get with that principal, find out what they need, and work with that school. I don't encourage them to come up here and let me, as a superintendent, take additional time to help them figure out how they want to help a school. So, I may be the minority here, but I can't, I really, I can't support this the way it is now. So, but those are my comments on it.
Mr. Varnadore?
While being mindful of Mr. Varnadore's caution to have some idea what we're talking about before voting on something, and also, Ms. Jackson's comments about, there's a lot of groups out there that want to participate...
They're already participating, not wanting to.
That do participate in different, very positive ways at schools and so forth. You know, the SDA is not any group. I mean, they represent 8,000 employees. I won't always agree with them on issues. They won't always agree with me on issues. The board won't always agree with them on things. And I'm sure we'll have some very frank dialogue, as they say in the diplomatic world, over the coming months. But here is this organization of, representing primarily teachers in the classroom, saying, we want to put the weight and of our organization, our members, behind essentially what we already support, community-based schools. And in order for this to work, we need the teachers and the nurses and the counselors to be active and successful and enthusiastic about it. I mean, the resolution itself, it does talk about pilots, but you know, it says, just to read two sentences, it says that we will work with the SDA and Equality Alliance and other organizations to develop pilot programs, to create a set of community schools where a program of collaboration and community outreach will be developed with the goal to enhance school climate and increase student achievement and success. That's consistent with the board's policies on community schooling. So, I, and that's what the resolution says. The SDA's own specific goals and objectives as part of it would probably, if we wrote them, would be different for us and be different for another group. But I think this is a, there's going to be a lot of things that we're going to disagree with. But here we have something which we can, is essentially in alliance with the most important labor organization in our group, and also the teacher. Ultimately, it's about the teacher in the classroom with the kids. And we want all of them to be excited and engaged as an organization about this process. So, we're basically being asked to put our imprimatur on their involvement. And so, I, number one, I not only don't see any harm to it, I think it's an exciting collaboration. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of discussion on the pilot schools, although I know one neighborhood that there won't be a pilot in. But no, I'm just looking at Mr. Varnadore. But the, I'm just kidding. And so, I just think we're going to have a lot of discussion about the pilots and specifics and any other parameters beyond that. But you know, this is about as close to apple pie and American flag and all that that we can get to. So, I...
Apple pie.
Apple pie, sorry.
Well, I like apple pie and the American flag, so it sounds pretty reasonable to me. But as a teacher, I think my perspective and take on this resolution is that it's really extending an olive branch to the people that work every day to help educate our children, to say, we want to work together. We want your ideas and your input about how we can improve student learning. I mean, that's what we're about. That's what the board's about, the staff, the cabinet, the superintendent, the teachers. And that's why I also suggested that we add other folks in the school site who are a part of helping children to learn, paraeducators, classified employees, and other folks who have dedicated their lives to improving our children's education. The other thing that I think is important, and Ms. Jackson raised a couple really good concerns, you know, well, what if the school doesn't want to be a part of the pilot program? Well, maybe that's a part of the process that the superintendent explores. Maybe there's some kind of application process or, you know, survey about who wants to participate in the pilot program. Second, you know, she raised a very good point about, you know, is this mean we're going to throw out all the contracts for the folks working in those sites? And I think that it says here in the "be it further resolved" line that agreements will be followed. So, that we're looking at opportunities and areas where we can find common ground to improve student learning. And then, the last point that I think is really very, very... And then, the last point that I think is really very, very strong with this resolution is it says that, this is the thing, being somebody that really loves data to try to figure out if something is effective and working or not, just that the superintendent will report back to the board with achievement measures on efficacy and effectiveness of this kind of a program. And it's just continuing to move the agenda and the values of really wanting to support community-based schools. And that's, I think, really what we're about. And I think we're going to see that by getting more stakeholders involved, I'm hopeful that we will see increased student achievement.
Okay, well, I think it's a very good discussion to have. My first question is, how could we possibly turn down an offer of help to help our kids and our schools? I know there have been a lot of questions about what is community-based school reform, because it's not a quick gimmicky sort of approach that people can see very quickly. One of the things is that we, as a board, as a district, can't do community-based school reform. We can merely set up the structure that allows it to happen, but it's exactly groups like this that are stepping forward and saying, "We want to improve our schools." They're the ones that are going to make the difference. And I do acknowledge that we do have certain structures in school site councils and lots of different things in place, but sometimes we have a structure in place, but not necessarily the attitude that goes along with it. Just taking the teachers as an example, I mean, we saw some pretty significant improvements in recent years in our science scores, and we can't really attribute that to anything other than the teachers and the classroom and the collaboration that they were doing in terms of improving their teaching. There were different superintendents, different boards, different rules, and they kept improving. And so, that's one of the reasons we said, "We need to unleash this power and quit restraining it by us getting in the way all the time and saying, 'We've got a great idea at the top, throw out what you're doing, and implement this right away, and this will be the answer.'" So, this is a really important step that we're taking. And this, you're right, and Ms. Jackson's right, I mean, this is just one example. There are many other groups who are helping and contributing and being involved in the schools. I think, like Mr. Barnett said, this, I do believe that this is a special case. As Mr. Brera said, going back to the teacher strike in the 90s up until the present day, there's been a lot of animosity and adversarial relationship between the district and the board, and this is, I think it is important to begin to establish some initial trust. And as Mr. Barnett said, there'll be a lot of things that we will disagree with, with the teachers' union in terms of certain activities and ideas and so forth, but this is an area where we can agree and we can cooperate. And in terms of the issue of pilot projects and pilot schools and so forth, I think it's pretty clear, at least to me, that the whole process is, there are some teachers, a group of teachers, and community members and other organizations who want to be involved in improving the schools. Is your school interested in that? If your school is not interested in community involvement, or the teachers do not want to work together, if that were the case, then they would not be one of these pilot schools. I mean, this is very much, I'm sure, a voluntary participation. I think the advantage is to have, to put the minds together, kind of from the district management, let's say, point of view, and the teachers in the classroom point of view, and some of the community organizations, having different ideas about what could be accomplished in different places. And there could be a list of 30 from one group and 30 for another group, but there might be, you know, 20 that would overlap where all the groups felt that this would be a really good place to concentrate. So, I don't see, when I hear the word pilot projects, that to me is something that has been done a lot, and I know there's been criticism, "At the top, we've decided we have this great new idea, and we're going to impose it on 17 schools, and then we'll see how it goes." This is very different. It's just allowing the schools and communities that want to work together to do it, and just putting our stamp of approval on it. So, I agree with this very much.
Yeah, I agree with, I think Dr. Evans really summarized this well, and I guess the only thing that I would add is, I certainly look at this as, among other things, a statement of humility from this district, an acknowledgement that whether we want to call something community-based reform, or whatever we want to call it, as long as we approach stakeholders with an attitude that says, "We're asking you, or we're telling you, to participate in our process, and our strategy, and our ideas, that we will never succeed to the extent that if those stakeholders come to it out of their own ownership, and own ideas, and own sense of responsibility about how this happens." I, you know, we do have structures in place, but you know, frankly, you know, if there's an issue at a school where teachers or parents or different organizations that are supposed to be actively participating in the school side council, and we find that there's not that active participation, we don't get to that active participation by mandating to the principal, "Go and get those people involved." Because it's the choice of those people, whether to get involved or not. And what this is about is, again, saying, "We're going to approach this, understanding that we've got a critical, necessary role to play in allowing our kids to learn, but so do other groups and other stakeholders and other organizations." And we're not going to do this in a way that, you know, simply mandates or invites people to be part of our process, and by, you know, "our," I mean, the five of us or the, you know, the leadership in the district, and saying this process has to be owned. And I absolutely agree with Ms. Jackson, that we've got plenty of examples right now where organizations on their own are coming into this process. And if what those organizations say to us is, you know, "But we've been through this a few times, and we want to, and we want to take this seriously, so it's not, it's beyond mom and apple pie, but in order for us to take it seriously, we want to see that the district is serious about working as a partner," then I think that's an absolutely valid request from organizations who are taking it seriously on their own. So, that's...
I even have a challenge. I think that when you come back with your report after your first semester or second semester, I think you should compare it to the schools that have people that have just come to volunteer because they're in their community. And I think that is the true pilot. This is not funded, so this is a volunteer as well, but I think that if you look at, you know, the examples that we heard this morning from Claremont and from the Lincoln Cluster, and other areas where people are already coming for, didn't come to the board, top-down support, but they just came because they believe in the schools and their community, I think you should compare those. I think you should find, if you got 10 examples of those, 10 examples of those compared to the 10 schools that want to get in this pilot.
No, it's absolutely fair. Yeah.
Okay, with... Call the question?
Yep, please vote. Okay, great, passes 4-1. All right, let's go back to item F2. So, this is our...
Move approval.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
No.
If not, please vote.
Oh, yes. Got a question?
Nope. I just wanted to make sure I knew what it was, I was voting yes.
All right, thanks.
I'd move to approve items G1 to G4.
Okay, and...
Okay, second?
Yeah, any discussion? If not, please...
Does that include actually the minutes of December 2nd, 6th, 7th? Because I didn't see those. I think it's just the ones through November...
No, November 30th should have been removed from the listing there.
So, how many, which minutes are not, on this list, which minutes are, we are not approving?
Actually, there are three sets of minutes you're approving. The minutes of the regular meeting, November 9, the special meeting, November 16, and the special meeting, December 2.
Okay, that's what I, I'll move approval of those minutes, even though I wasn't here. And that'll abstain, because Stover likes it when I abstain.
Let's take, let's take...
And nobody can tweet about it.
Let's take item G1 separately then, so it's approval of minutes for November 9th, 16th, and December 2.
Vote.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, yeah.
Already tried, and you didn't like it.
I said yes.
One minute thing, well, it's like automatically abstaining? No?
Oh, you're not kidding me?
I just want to abstain once a meeting or twice a meeting, just fun, I wasn't here.
Okay, item G2 through G4, do you have a motion?
Move.
And a second, all right, please vote.
All the buttons to get equal.
You voted on that one. Okay, item G5, so the issue here is, we've got three board members, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Beiser, and me. Well, there's a question here, which is, this is for three of us to go up and participate in the PTA Legislative Safari, which happens on February 7th and 8th. And in fact, some of the key parts of that visit are on February 8th. February 8th, we also have a scheduled, a full day of meetings. So, the question is, what do we want to do about that?
Move the meeting to 2/15.
Okay, so Ms. Jackson is proposing that we move all of that work to February 15th.
Second.
And we've got a second.
I have a question for staff. Is there, would you have a preference between moving it back to February 1st, or I mean, moving up to February 1st or back to February 15th?
Back.
Back. I'm sure they said the back.
Postpone.
Would be the staff.
Yes.
The staff's present.
Whatever you can postpone, postpone, okay.
So, as part of the motion is to move approval and move the board meeting of the 8th to the 15th of February.
Correct, the board meeting as well as the workshop, yeah.
So, move.
Well, we've got, okay.
I thirded.
All right.
I'm going to vote for your money.
Even voting, there we go. Okay, item, item H2, an information item from board member...
Mr. Beiser's going to do our brief report on this.
Yeah, we, just reporting back to the board and to the community about our Efficiency Ad hoc Committee. We have our first openly public meeting. It'll be at the Parent Ballard Center Saturday, January 22nd, 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the Tiger Team kickoff. Any and all interested community members are welcome to attend. Again, that's at the Parent Ballard Center on January 22nd, Saturday afternoon, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. for the Tiger Team kickoff. The first four areas that we'll be looking at to find, to evaluate efficiencies, human resources, transportation fleet management, including busing schedules and operational costs, IT, information and technology, and special education.
Excellent, any questions?
Email at efficiency@ sandy.net if you have input, ideas, or suggestions, and you're not able to make the meeting. We still want to hear your ideas. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Beiser and Mr. Barnett. Item I2, so this is the...
So, move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. No further discussion, please vote. Okay, item I3.
Move to approve.
Yeah, this is about categorical flexibility. Okay, we've got a motion from Dr. Evans and a second from Mr. Beiser. Any discussion? Ms. Jackson?
Just a quick question to refresh my memory on page 1. What is the difference between the first column where it says "program use" and the second one where it says "general education purposes"? Is the program use here at the Ed Center and the general ed is out to the schools, or vice versa? Or neither?
I think it's the latter. So, the program use is still supporting the categorical programs that the funds were initially designed to support, and the general ed purpose is helping the general fund.
So, you're telling me that we're taking more than half of the money away from the program and putting it in the general ed fund?
We're using about, whatever that is, 52% of the money to help support the general fund in the unrestricted areas, so salaries, other educational programs, obviously.
Again, you're telling me that we're using more than half of the money that comes to categorical for special items, more than half of it is going for people, other things?
This is not categorical money, this is all tier 3 unrestricted revenue.
And Mr. Little, as I understand, this is also based on previous actions of the board.
Correct.
This is just a delayed bookkeeping thing, as I understand, and we have to prove it, but we, as a board, approve this.
I do, yes. In fact, when you approved the preliminary budget in September, this was part of that budget.
It's a new board.
It was spent before the board got here.
Uh-huh, you're trying to, you know, you're trying to weasel out of it.
No, I mean, it was part of your, this year's approved budget. If we were not to approve it, then they'd have to probably cut off, close a lot of schools, probably starting tomorrow.
No, 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 the difference is that the program, that's why I asked the question. The program use means it's being used for what it's entitled to. They're shifting it to general education purposes means it's being used for other people's salary. And so, the question, you know, and certainly, I may not even support this now, because the question then becomes, if we are failing in a certain area, let's take our community-based English tutor program that we're looking at cutting, then we're cutting, you know, we're saying it's not a successful program, but they're not even getting the funding that it's required to have.
But you're talking about the general fund as essentially, well, I'm going to let Mr. Little explain.
But I'm still basing, I'm sorry, but it's just that this, this is based on us approving, a majority of the board approving the budget last June.
Correct.
Made all of this happen.
So, okay, I, again, I understand that, and I think we have to be, again, there are districts, and I know we're here from CSBA, there are several districts that want, they have the flexibility to use categoricals any way they want. And this is what we did, because we got an exemption to do that, okay? But I'm expressing my concern that in doing that, I mean, I oppose it only because, even though we're in a financial deficit, the people that is hurting hurts us more in the long run. That's my point. I understand that, yeah, we got flexibility to do it, so we exercise our right to do it in order to balance our budget. It doesn't mean it's going to help us in the long run.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
Make sure you voted yes for it, since it was your budget, because you weren't going to.
Okay, consent agenda, I had item E3 and E29 that were pulled, were there others? Just those two? Okay, so item E3, I think that was...
Yes, and certainly, the language in this item is my concern. And the language in this item that concerns me is this, and I try to be very, because it is getting late, but before, when we had some art programs brought forth, and I said, identify the schools, and it wasn't spread around equally, and the conversation was that some schools in some areas didn't volunteer. And I said, "At this level, it's not about volunteering, because some schools have more in their place than others." What disturbs me is the language that's in the last paragraph of this page, which states that the participating schools, then it says, "Only schools that agree to have all K2 teachers trained will receive the training." And not all schools will be able to participate in this grant. On the next page, they have a list of schools, and I need to make sure that I'm very clear that the principals of these schools are familiar with this, and that they know that they have this option, that they don't get skipped over. Because unfortunately, and I know it's all about trust, but unfortunately, in certain areas of the city, it doesn't happen, and then after it doesn't happen, and the question is asked, people say, "Oh, no one volunteered." Well, I would like to have something in writing from those principals saying that, "You know what? Euclid is up here first." I'd like to have something in writing from Euclid principals saying, "You know, at this time, if they so choose, we're not going to participate." What I don't want to find out is that Euclid wasn't included, and then when I asked, maybe it says, "Oh, they didn't want to participate," verbally. I think it should be in writing, because many of these schools don't even know about this until after the fact. So, I appreciate this from the staff, but I think that we should have the responses in writing from the schools that don't want to participate. If that's okay with the other board members, then I'll move this forward.
I agree with you.
Okay, I have a second. Does a mini motion?
Your motion is...
My motion is that...
To table this until we come back with...
No, no, don't table it. The motion is that any school that does not want to participate does so in writing.
Oh, I got you, yeah, absolutely, okay.
So, that means it didn't notify.
So, it's...
So, it's an opt-out proposal?
Right.
So, the motion is to approve this item, make the amendment that any school that doesn't want to participate, opt out in writing.
Yes.
Okay, motion, and we've got a second, please vote.
Motion, and it's, we've got a second, please vote. Okay. Great. And then item E29, this involves landscaping and I had a little chat with the architect, I had a little chat with Lee about this. I just want to make sure that, again, it's part of everything that we're doing when we go to contract for services that involve our, in this case, our OSS workers, that they're, you know, involved in the process. So, Lee, did you want to address that point?
Sure. This is simply an architecture contract, a professional services contract. It doesn't involve any labor, material, and equipment to maintain or install landscaping. Actually, if anything, it supports that effort. And some of the OSS members were actually represented in the selection of these architecture firms.
With that, I'd, well, I'll move approval.
Second. No, a second.
Please vote.
Okay.
Okay. That concludes this meeting. Do we have any motions to adjourn?
Adjourn, and then we're supposed to debrief.
And then we'll go upstairs to debrief.